Somebody said, "I'll see you in everything." You know, right?
Yeah.
Somebody said, "I'll see you in everything." You know, right?
Yeah.
I feel that way, we were just like... Y'all been getting it now?
Well, take one.
That's what... It was...
That's why I had another question.
Yeah. We do things back. Some of them... Some of them... And...
Oh, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah. Yeah. So... Right there.
Yeah. I'm there. And I think it is... Oh. He is. Oh. Oh. Are you good? I don't like that. Are you good? We would have had some... We might have... Uh...
What's wrong? I guess I forgot any person in the church. My bad.
Yeah.
Catching on together.
That guy's... Yo, you shit. No, you got one.
Yes. That's the day they get it back. Oh, I... Oh, yeah. She... She keeps me on...
Hey, Black. Can I have that, isn't it? I mean, you're...
I'm just...
Hey, Black, shut up. The man on G4. Hey, what's your name? What do you mean, "hustling" these days? They're trying to go back to top, you know? TDD. I'm gonna stay alive at the subject. And I read...
Yeah.
Yeah, we all wrong. I guess maybe I called for that, uh...
No, no.
And... Oh, yeah. All this will... Okay.
Did this crap maybe last night? Scrap? Okay, I got it. Thank you.
Yes. Yeah, 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 yeah. I think it only mattered in church. I think it happened in tourism. He showed me, he sent me a picture. I was like, "Man." So he said, "I'm over here in my back room." I was saying, "You're far away." We get used to it. You get used to it.
Last week we come to insurance, right?
Do you know? No, I didn't know what you... Who dressed you up? Hi, Doctor. I've been knowing you a long time.
No, I was being beat by you too.
Every...
I always think of this... I always call me Chris.
Okay, a little like this.
What do you want, Baruch, because I get it?
No, I guess I got like that. Yeah. I guess six times.
Hey.
How is...
Five eight.
Proportions like go right and left.
Talking to the chair.
Almost like... My God. They, uh... Yeah. I got... I mean, I'm more attached to...
Friend? All right, go ahead. All right, here we go.
Yeah.
The time is now four fifty-two, and the special affairs meeting is now called to order. Roll call, Madam Clerk. Mr. Mays? Ms. Lewis?
Present.
Mr. Murphy?
Ms. Priestley?
Present.
Ms. Winfrey Carter?
Present.
Ms. Burns is not in. Mr. Pfeiffer?
Present.
Ms. Worthing?
Present.
You have seven members present?
Here, we have seven members present. Request for changes in addition to the agenda.
Support, support.
Yes, yes.
Mr. Pfeiffer?
Yes, yes.
One of us will have that. There are twenty-one eighty. With no other schedule. And never, I don't see a brother with no other order. Uh... If you know I'm motioning on the floor, no proposal to this, and you got a free, a sure option, and I've been voted immediately. That's what has been correct. But then through you to the clerk, can you read the rules of motion, just to vote immediately? Is that my right to do that? And I'm having this close to you. This is where I come from. Most of the people here is... This is the... I'm all... That's actually what it says.
The rule sixteen point one one.
This is...
Sixteen point one one. It's a motion to vote immediately. Call the question. Any council member vote to vote immediately? If the motion is supported, debate will cease immediately. Two-thirds of the council members present. But as the majority of the council members read, require a motion to...
So I have a one order, Madam Chair. It sounds like to me that it needs to be debated in a motion before that motion is proper, and it also seems to require two-thirds to vote. Did I hear that right?
Um, if Mr. Mays, we didn't get a chance to... To vote. So your point of order is, well, who's... Let's try to figure that out.
Point of order, Madam Chair, we did vote on her motion to vote immediately.
But I didn't rule.
Madam Chair, you entertained the motion to vote immediately. It was seconded. We voted, and you...
And I didn't... And I didn't rule.
What you mean, you didn't rule? The vote speaks for itself, don't you?
Well, you know, the rules they do. So I have to call the vote, but... So the point of order is...
I...
The appeal is for Mr. Mays to continue to speak about his point of order before the chair have announced the outcome of the vote. So, um, go ahead.
Madam Chair, through you to Davina. Davina, can you hand me a copy of that rule? So I can discuss this in the appeal. Okay, Mr. Murphy gave me yes. Thank you, Mr. Davina. You said it was sixteen point... One. A motion to vote immediately. Any council person, they move to vote immediately. Period. If the motion is supported, debate will cease immediately. There was no debate going on? What's up, Ms. Davina? Seventeen point one. Turn it to it. Seventeen point one. So the round rule would read, according to Ms. Davina, the council may decide by majority vote to limit or determine the time for discussion of a pending motion. Wasn't no motion pending? Um, or to modify or remove limitations already imposed. It was limitations already imposed. This may include a limit of time for each council person to speak to the issue. Here you go, Ms. Davina. That particular rule, this one don't give no time. That's why I asked for the interpretation. This ain't even limiting the time. This is, I guess, intended to give no time on rules that's been opposed on debates and discussions. So... In this appeal, she said it was denied. I'm gonna vote yes after looking at two different rules. I don't care what the... And I'm gonna make a matter of it, 'cause I don't care what the foolish five did. I can read and I can write. They haven't been following the rules for a year and a few months. Both rules that I read, um, says to me that this rule is premature or being misimplied. And I know that they come in here with the intent of trying to speed these meetings up. No agenda changes, no discussion. And, uh, I think Ms. Priestley's motion was premature. The chair ruled that is not. And I don't think the chair read or know those rules. And so I'll be voting yes. And I don't care what the other five do. There's recalls happening. Hear me?
Anyone else like to speak on this appeal?
Yes.
Mr. Murphy?
Thank you. Um, so the, um, rule, um, to, um... The motion, um, that was originally put on the floor was just to, um, not debate any agenda changes. But to still add... You still can add an agenda change. So you could say, for instance, I would like to add on the agenda to talk about the opera dollars. Or I would like to add on the agenda to talk about John Doe. And what we'll do is we'll vote immediately on that agenda change without debate. So we either voted up or voted down. So it's not that we voting on this is not allowing, um, our colleagues the opportunity to actually, um, add any additional agenda changes on the agenda. It's just to, um, limit debate or, um, talk about it when we get to that agenda change. 'Cause if we don't do that, what will happen is we will add on here, um, an agenda... Agenda change. And then we'll debate it. Or we'll talk about it for five or ten minutes. Then we'll turn around, and if we... And what makes it so bad is if we add an agenda change, and then we don't limit any kind of debate. When you add an agenda change, I believe that the... An agenda change comes with unlimited, um, minutes, where you can talk about it as long as you want to. And what we want to do is be respectful of, um, the time that we have in the county building, and we have a lot on agenda. And we do want to discuss the agenda. We do wanna, um, do the business of the city of Flint. And if any of my colleagues, um, have anything on agenda that they would like to, um, have discussed, they more than welcome to discuss it. And hopefully, any of my colleagues is not trying to stop people from being able to discuss anything on agenda. What we are just trying to do is, um, be respectful of each other's time and also be able to conduct the business. 'Cause we have a lot of business on here. And if you know our last meeting, we wasn't able to, um, finish the complete business of the city of Flint. And that's what we is attempting to do. So this is by no means, um, an attempt not to add any agenda changes on the agenda. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Mr. Murphy. Anyone else would like to speak on this appeal? All right. See, if there's no one else to speak on this appeal, I will utilize my time and turn it over to Attorney Kim. Attorney Kim?
Uh, thank you, Council President. The motion was a motion to vote immediately on all, uh...
One order.
Challenges that could be proposed.
One order.
What is your point?
You say you wanna utilize your time and turn it over to Attorney Kim. This is a debate among council. Once I see this president getting set, I wanna know two or three things. One, is the clock running? Two, we can give our time to other folks? And three, and I already know that this is rigged and set up. This is a vote and the determination of council. I haven't seen this, um, opportunity and people chiming in. I might wanna give Woodson my time in the next...
Mr. Mays, your point of order is denied. You have to stay germane to the agenda. So, um, thank you. So...
Point of order, Madam Chair.
What we broke him.
Me discussing whether or not the attorney and Woodson can chime in his germane to you giving the floor to Attorney Kim. Don't start early. Don't I'll appeal your ruling on germane. It will be a longer. So don't get laborable with me. I am buying it.
Thank you. Attorney Kim?
Uh... Rule sixteen point one does state that a two-thirds of the council members present. I wanted to clarify that. And the present was, uh, seven members. And so five is two-thirds of that. So the... President was correct that the motion passed. Uh, rule sixteen point two states that a motion to vote immediately is not debatable. Uh, rule sixteen point two states that a motion to vote immediately is not debatable. And so there is no debate on the motion to, to, uh, vote immediately.
Request for information.
What's your request?
Attorney Kim, you read rule sixteen point, I guess, one and two or something. But you skipping over a part of and if you're talking about how many people is present in sixteen point one and two, what you read, why are you skipping over the part that talks about any council person related to the motion to appeal it, to a cease debate? Um, it was no debate, you skipping over the part, and I wanna hear what you say about what the, um, definition of debate is. Do you understand that debate is when a motion is pending and that is relevant to ceasing debate and voting immediately? No debate, it was no motion on the floor. What'd you say to that?
I'll say that your interpretation of the rules is incorrect.
And I'm gonna say you didn't answer.
Mr. Pfeiffer, what's your point?
On the floor without a motion or a privileged motion?
Thank you.
Point of order.
Correct, Ms.
Point of order, Madam Chair.
What's your point?
We was in a point of order, and Mr. Um, Pfeiffer, um, didn't allow you to rule. Mr. Pfeiffer wanna be so intelligent these last couple, be point of order.
Mr. May, please utilize the point.
Be a point of order. When I interrupted, I did a point of request for information, he answered it. Mr. Pfeiffer hollered out, "Point of order", because I followed up with my request for information. If you and Mr. Pfeiffer wanna play these games, I'm gonna play them to the hill. Now you ruled on my point of order, because he didn't answer the question, I asked him, and you don't have to. Did the term debate in sixteen one oh two deal with a pending motion? He says that I'm misinterpreted. I'm not misinterpreting what debate is, because any fool know that debate is when a motion is pending. He avoided the question, you read the rule, you called him to take your place, and we gonna get to the bottom of it. Let's see how you rule on my point of order as it relates to the relevancy of that motion.
Okay, so, so Attorney Kim answered your question. So I'm gonna go back, um, back to the rules. So it stated that it was a, a motion on the floor, and the motion was asked to vote immediately. If you will look at rule sixteen point two, it's saying a motion to vote immediately is not debatable. Rule sixteen point two says that a motion to vote immediately, which was put on the floor by Councilman Priestley, is undebatable. So that makes it undebatable. So, because it said in sixteen point one, that two-thirds of the council members present is required for the motion to carry, we only have seven, we only have seven people here. So therefore, we don't have two-thirds. So that motion was not going to carry. I didn't get an opportunity to finish ruling before a point of order was called. So, so that is how I'm going to end this debate. Being that again, rule sixteen point two states that a motion to vote immediately is not debatable. And that is according to our council rules. Um, roll call, Madam Clerk. So if you vote no, you will vote to overturn the ruling of the chair? If you vote yes, you will vote to uphold the ruling of the chair, which is upholding council rule sixteen point.
Point of order, Madam Chair.
What is your point?
That ain't what this appeal was. You say you hadn't ruled. You might wanna check with the clerk in the record, 'cause y'all ain't gonna bamboozle me, you bamboozled Pfeiffer, man, but not me. Now, if you wanna check with the clerk and make jive your memory what this appeal was, then you might state it right.
Mr. May, so that was improper point, however, let me, um, restate it properly.
Point of order. It wasn't no improper point, the record speaks for itself, I'm calling a point of order, 'cause you misstated the appeal. How is that improper? Down there, you trying to make me look like a fool. That ain't gonna happen.
Um, all right, so the point of order was about this being debatable. That was the point of order. So, with that being said.
Point of order, Madam Chair.
What?
The appeal wasn't whether or not it was debatable. The appeal was whether or not that rule applied. You didn't call to vote. You say you didn't rule on it, now you let us know you gonna rule that the motion failed, but the appeal had to do with not nearly whether it was debatable. Appeal your ruling, you say I was out of order before you called to vote. That's what I recall. Either way it go, the motion gonna fail once we come out of this, but I wanna help you, the clerk, or anybody know what my appeal was.
Okay, so, um, so let me go ahead and state this correctly. Uh, excuse me, uh, no vote. A no vote is in favor of the chair. A yes vote is against the chair. And that's about apology rule sixteen point two. Roll call, Madam Clerk.
Ms. Lewis?
No.
Mr. Murphy?
No.
Ms. Priestley?
No.
Murphy Carter?
Yes.
Ms. Burns?
Yes.
Mr. Pfeiffer?
No.
Worthy?
No.
Mr. May?
Yes.
The vote is three yes, five no?
The vote is three yes, um, five no. The vote of the, um, the ruling of the chair stands. So, um, is there, uh, the chair will entertain a motion to limit debate to one round of one minute?
Point of order, Madam Chair. Point of order. Point of order.
So, what's your point?
My point is that when that appeal was made, you were at the point where you were gonna restate the vote and say whether the motion Ms. Priestley made fails or passes, that's where we're at. And it's your job now to state that that failed.
Got it, got it. Okay. So, um, so I withdraw, um, the chair entertaining the motion, because the vote to vote immediately passed.
Point of order.
What is your point?
You gotta restate the vote count. And then you gotta determine whether according to that rule, the motion passed or failed.
So the vote is five to two. Five to two. So there, so then we will vote immediately in sequence for any proposed agenda change.
Madam Chair, point of order, uh, point of, uh, a request for information.
What's your point?
Uh, you did not state the correct ruling, it was six to three. It was not six.
It's the vote that occurred earlier.
Okay, thank you. All right.
Point request for information was just said by Attorney Kim and Ms. Burns.
Do you, Madam Chair, do you?
She too busy drinking. Man, this is getting ridiculous, if we ain't gotta go through the chair, I'm gonna speak out just like Attorney Kim.
Ms. May, Ms. May. Ms. May. Mr. May, you don't have the floor.
Point of order. Madam Chair, a request for information is a privileged motion.
Ms. Ms. Mr. May, you must acknowledge before you get the floor.
If you don't cease talking in a point of order, I make a motion that you be removed early in this meeting.
Mr. May, you must acknowledge. According to council rules, must be acknowledged.
Point of order.
You must be acknowledged.
Point of order.
Mr. Mayes, what is your point?
Madam Chair, you screwing this meeting up. You, Attorney Kim, and everybody else who wanna. As Mr. Murphy say, cherry pick the rules. When I said a request for information, you had a straw in your mouth. And you didn't acknowledge it, but your job as a chair was to acknowledge that request of information, so I could see what Attorney Kim and Ms. Burns were saying before we proceed. You didn't do that. Then I called a point of order, which is higher than a request for information. And you kept talking. At this point, Ms., um, Lewis, I'm about to make a motion to have you remove this chair, so we won't get bogged down with you applying the rules wrong, not acknowledging privileged motions, too eager to give members warnings. This is getting a little much, so I want you to rule on my point of order, whether you were sucking out that straw and didn't honor my request for information. I want you to rule on my point of order, that you didn't immediately stop talking and ask me what my point was. Rule on that.
Mr. May, point of order is denied. According to rule twenty-five point one, the purpose of a point of order is to correct a breach in the rules when the presiding officer does not correct it or when the presiding officer makes a breach of the rules. Furthermore, followed by rule twenty-five point two, a point of order denied. What is your point?
My point is, it is a breach when you don't acknowledge a request for information or a point of order. That's the highest privileged motion. And you're saying my, um, my privileged motions I deny? My job is to appeal you immediately, and I so appeal.
Furthermore, point of order denied, according to rule twenty-five point two. A point of order should have been issued on my order.
Second, I'm appealing your ruling.
What ruling?
That my point of order is denied on privileged motions. You just ruled it was denied, I'm appealing immediately. Your job now is to ask us that second to the appeal.
Is there a, a second to the appeal?
Yes, there is, ma'am.
Okay, so, the appeal is the fact that the chair denied Mr. May's point of order for violating, and I was getting out rule twenty-five point one.
Point of order, Madam Chair. Point of order.
What is your point?
My appeal is that you're ignoring the two highest privileged motions. That's my appeal.
Okay, thank you. And so his point of order that I am ignoring his two highest appeals, okay?
Our privileged motions.
Privileged motions. You got it?
You gotta say it right.
All right.
This ain't no game.
Okay. So, with that being said, um, I stated what the appeal was about. Any discussion?
Madam Chair, according to y'all rules, you go to the maker of the appeal first. You ain't learned that yet? You ain't knowing any discussion, you first come to me and see if the maker of the motion wants to speak on the appeal. You need to check that rule?
Proceed, Mr. Mayes.
I know I'm gonna proceed. And I'm gonna proceed with you not trying to make a clown show out of this council meeting. And the reason I say that, because a request for information and a point of order is the highest privileged motions. Everything should stop. Even you drinking out of that straw. See, you chastise me and say I didn't, you didn't acknowledge my privileged motion, request for information. Attorney Kim was out of order, blurting out a response to Ms. Burns. He have to come through the chair. You're the chair, he can't just holler out. And I said, if you don't let Attorney Kim get away with that in our meetings, I'm gonna just start doing it. And I don't want no warning. I don't want you calling the police. Because I don't know what his nationality is, but if, whatever his nationality is, if he can just holler out in our meetings, so can I, a black man. I look at that. Ms. Burns, I did a request for information, her and Attorney Kim was talking. You sucking out of the straw and didn't acknowledge. Then you gonna come back and chastise me and say you out of order, I didn't acknowledge. Well, quit drinking out the straw. Do your job. Then I came back with a point of order. And you denied it. The two highest privileged motions, and after you denied my point of order, that you got to acknowledge my request, and that Attorney Kim can't just holler out. You tried to proceed and give me a warning. I'm gonna, I appeal your ruling. Attorney Kim can't just holler out without going through the chair. I do have a right to request information when I can't hear something properly from Burns and Kim, and I went out of order. We been in this meeting ten or twelve minutes, and you trying to warn me? And I'm exercising privileged motions. That was necessary. Now, if you want leeway to drink out the straw and ignore a privileged motion, I give you leeway to drink out the straw. But I'm not gonna give you leeway to come and punish me, because you're not doing your job as a chair, getting too busy drinking out of the straw. See, the video captures that. The video captures me saying request for information. It captures Attorney Kim hollering out without going through the chair, and it captures you drinking out of a straw. But my job is to immediately do a point of order and appeal you, and I'm not out of order, 'cause I don't trust y'all. I'm doing stuff in order, detail. Thank you so much.
Anyone else like to speak on this appeal?
Madam Chair.
Ms. Burns?
This is gonna be a long one, we gotta be out here by nine thirty. So when you, in the complaint, we see that they say that Councilman May, you wanna say he's the problem. But how you chair is also a problem. Because twenty-five point one also states, the purpose of a point of order is to correct a breach in the rules. You consistently, through every meeting, you don't acknowledge him. And you do it personally, I mean, you do it, and it's consistently. Then you shut him down, then you say, point of order denied. The rule of the chair is to keep the meeting going and to keep everyone in the meeting. Your objective has been to put him out of the meeting. And that's not going to work. And so when you wonder why he separates all twenty-one items and everything else, it's because there is no respect given, probably back and forth from each side. But not only do you not give him respect, you don't give respect for anyone, including myself, and also Councilwoman Jeremie Carter. You just don't. Just like you gave her a warning before, because she said, she looked at you. You're not fair. You're not fair, you're not impartial. So when you're chairing, it's not, you make, I feel I don't have a voice on this council when you chair. You're not a fair chair. You're not fair at all. Things that you do, even to looking back, and I had, and I looked at some video. You had someone send, Attorney Katina Irvin sent a very lengthy email. I hope you read that email, because she had some very good insight on things. Your response back to her was a very flippant response. And then she came back again to try to give you from woman to woman, from professional to professional, some good advice. And you cannot take constructive criticism, just like what you just did with your face and turned it up when I said that. You, you did. You are so dismissive of everything. You have to be fair with everyone. And it shows you're not. You had one meeting where you kept calling the police on the, on the residents, who spoke? You kept doing that. That's not the place for Officer Metcalf to be doing that. We don't wanna use the police to intimidate the speakers. It wasn't violence here. But we talk about those rules, and the rule was broken. When it, and it specifically tells us, twenty-five point four, a point of order cannot be ignored by the presiding officer. You are the presiding officer. You ignored him, you ignored him. You ignored him, you ignored him not once, twice, you just kept ignoring him. Then you kinda looked down and was like, Mr. Mays, what is your point of order? All you had to do is acknowledge it the first time, and we wouldn't have to have gone through all of that. The first time would've been your responsibility to acknowledge him. Whether you disagree with him or like him or not, you're the chair. I would like for you to please be fair. Thank you.
Anyone else would like to speak on this appeal?
Madam Chair.
Ms. Worthing?
I try not to speak, 'cause I just want this to be over with. It's now been a half an hour over someone's grievance over voting quickly. So, we can't even vote quickly. We're trying to move this along, 'cause we have to be out of here, um, in four hours, and we're not gonna be out of here. Uh, well, we will be, but we won't be done with the agenda, and that's unfortunate. So, I, I don't know why we would bring up things that happened in the past. Um, let's focus on what's happening right now. And what's happening is obstruction. Uh, the majority agrees. So, anyone who talks on the appeal, keeps appealing, you're supporting obstruction of the city business. And that's unfortunate. We need to get things done. Why even have these meetings at all? If your sole purpose is to not get anything done, we might as well let the state take over again. I mean, that's where it's headed if we can't function. So, I, I'd like to see Mr. Mays get some warnings here, so we can speed up this process and get some work done. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Worthing. Anyone else who'd like to comment? Mr. Murphy?
Thank you. Um, so, all we was voting on is to limit the debate or not have a debate on the motion to agenda changes. Now, we hearing all of this different, what he said, she said, versus the right thing to do, and that's to move the city of Flint forward. I would suggest to, um, Davina that you do some research for some, um, training, for, um, parliamentary procedures, um, maybe, um, look at exploring, bringing us in as Sergeant Arms to help us chair, um, these meetings. And I've been, um, thought this even prior to me getting on City Council. I think we need some extra eyes and ears to help us move these meetings forward. 'Cause what I'm, um, hearing is my colleagues take inserts of the rules, interpret them how they feel like they should fit. And that's almost how people, um, use scriptures in the Bible and, um, take scriptures and interpret scriptures to be however their ideology or philosophy, or what it is to make them, make it fit how they want it to win whatever argument that they is trying to. So, we going back and forth on interpretations of the rules. So, I believe we need a parliamentary or Sergeant Arms, either or. Um, I would like for Davina to do some research to see what that is. Also, I think we need to probably look at, um, going to a retreat outside of City Council or City Hall, because it's a lot of hostile, um, emotions with each one of us, including me sometimes, um, with our colleagues. And we got so much potential within us that we can do so much great things for the city of Flint. And to come to meeting after meeting after meeting and spend a lot of, um, I'll call it frivolous time, going back and forth with each other, is not helping the people of the city of Flint, move the city of Flint forward and take care of the business of the city of Flint. And it's going on almost two years, and we still at each other's throat. So, I think we need to look at, um, doing a deep dive within ourselves to try to, um, think outside the box and get some training to better be able to facilitate a decent and, and order meeting. 'Cause at this point in time, I don't think nobody letting go on their ideology or philosophy or what they feel, and it's, um, holding this community hostage. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Murphy. Anyone else would like to speak on this appeal? All right, so seeing none, I will go ahead and I will be the last speaker. So, um, it's definitely true that we need, um, I, I agree with parliamentary procedures, uh, when, in getting a parliamentarian. But before we can get a parliamentarian, we must make sure that we get respect. 'Cause regardless of who we bring, if we don't have a mutual respect for the individual and it's for the, the process, for moving the city forward, it will be not beneficial, very unfruitful. So, we must make sure that we, uh, maintain decorum. Yes, I had to take a drink real quick before I start coughing on the mic. And according to the council rules, there's nowhere saying that you cannot take a quick sip before you rule. So, according to the Rule 25.1, just to be clear, a point of order is not to prove a, prove a point or to talk to the audience members or anything. Uh, point of order is to correct a breach in the rules when the presiding officer does not correct it, or when the presiding officer makes a breach of the rules. That's Rule 25.1, I didn't make a breach of the rules. And it was not a breach of the rules. So, what is your request?
Ms. Lewis, you don't understand ignoring a request for information, a point of information, and a point of order when you ignore that. You don't believe that to be a breach of the rules, is that what you're saying?
Okay, so according to Rule 26.4, using a request for information as an opportunity to gain the floor is not allowed. Multiple uses of request for information is called for disciplinary actions. So, that's what we must understand going forward. And so, according to Rule 25.2, which I was getting to before I was interrupted with another frivolous point of order, a point of order should not be used for minor infractions that do not affect the substantive rights of the city council or its members. Again, a point of order should not be used for minor infractions that do not affect the substantive rights of city council or its members. Why do I read that? Because when I'm up here, I'm chairing specifically by the rules. I do apologize if others are intimidated or do not like hearing the rules, but the rules will be enforced as long as I'm in this seat. So, um, Mr. Mays, when you make points of order, they should be to correct a breach in the rules. If there's no breach in the rules, your point of order will be denied. So, that, those are the council rules set forth by this council. So, if your point of order is not correcting a breach in the rules, then it will be denied. If it's used for minor infractions, such as me sucking out of a straw to clear my throat, then it will be denied, because that is not a breach in the rules. So, going forward, if we continue to have breaches of the rules by abusing privileged motions, you will be issued a warning, and that goes for every council member. So, with that being said, we're gonna go ahead and go to the vote for this appeal. If you vote for no, you will uphold the ruling of the chair. Yes, we'll overturn the ruling of the chair. Roll call, Madam Clerk.
Mr. Murphy?
No.
Ms. Priestley?
No.
Ms. Murphy Carter?
Yes.
Ms. Burns?
Yes.
Mr. Pfeiffer?
No.
Ms. Worthing?
No.
Mr. Mays?
Yes.
Ms. Lewis?
No.
The vote is three yes, five no?
The vote is three yes, five no. The ruling of the chair stands. So, now we are on the separating of request for changes and/or addition to the agenda.
Yeah, Madam Chair.
Mr. Mays?
I have an add-on resolution, I've labeled it add-on number one. Have you, Ms. Downey, have you passed it out, or you passing it out now? It's an add-on resolution dealing with public safety. Um, and the chief of police has kinda agreed to name it weekend patrols. It's probably gonna cost us three hundred to vote in a thousand, and I want this added to the agenda. And public safety is a priority. I want it added, um, to the agenda prior to the consent agenda.
Okay, so you want this added, you said prior to the consent agenda? Okay. All right, so we have that, and we have called this resolution number one. Okay, so, anyone change this to the agenda?
Madam Chair.
Um, Ms. Priestley?
Yes, um, I have a resolution to approve, um, a reappointment to the, um, C Y committee. And, um, a city clerk is passing that out now.
Okay. All right, so, well, we're gonna call this, oh, this. All right, and that'd be add-on number two? All right. Any more additions, um, or changes to the agenda? Okay, so seeing that we have none, we will go ahead and we will vote immediately in sequence for...
Point of order, Madam Chair.
What, uh, excuse me? What is, Mr. Mays?
Point of order, Madam Chair. My point is that if y'all whining about time, you can order these without objections, and we can move on. If don't take a vote in a committee meeting, did you realize that?
Um, a- again, that's improper, Mr. Mays, so that will be your first one.
I'll appeal the ruling of the chair.
There, there is an appeal?
I support his appeal.
All right, this has been supported. So, according to the rules that we just made, the point of order and point of information cannot be used to take the floor or for minor infractions. So, that request for information wasn't, was, that request was improper. Go ahead, Mr. Mays.
Yeah, I got a name, it's not just go ahead. Um, I'll appeal the ruling, and I don't care how you, Priestley, Quincy Murphy, and Eva give him a warning and throw him out. Vote. Pfeiffer, I don't care how the five of y'all vote, because it's getting to that point in the city of Flint. Y'all whining about saving time, getting out of here by nine thirty, and then y'all get mad when I separate to take care of the business. And then y'all vote lockstep. Now, here they been to vote lockstep to give me a warning and to throw me out of a meeting frivolously that I've been elected to a seat for, because I told them, as a senior councilperson, this is a committee meeting, you don't need a vote. You can order this without objections. But she's the chair. She's smart, the Dr. Lewis. She forgetting that this is a committee meeting. We gotta be out of here by nine thirty. I can order Priestley and Mays' agenda change without objections, and we can be moving on to public speaking. We don't need motions and debate and discussion, so she's so outdone, Ms. Green, that I did that. She's so outdone that I called it to her attention. Ain't gonna give you a warning. Ain't gonna give you a warning. I ain't never seen nothing like that. I'm glad I got a minute and thirteen seconds, because Miss Adele Lewis is abusing her power. Yeah, I'm the senior councilperson, trying to help them speed up meetings, then they get mad when I protest and do the separation, 'cause all five of them have voted repeatedly to throw my black ass out for some, I something I ain't really done. And the whole town watching. They watching from Virginia to Mississippi to Alabama. And I'm looking at their crew. Normally, their crew is certain white folks. Whether they in the audience, whether they in the ninth ward council seat, Worthing. I just wish you'd warn him and throw his, throw him out, because, you know, then we can get something done. We get stuff done when you absent, Ms. Worthing, you got the worst attendance record for the last twelve years.
Point of order.
Stop the clock that four seconds.
Ms. Priestley, what's your point?
That, um, discussing attendance records has nothing to do with this appeal.
You are absolutely right, Ms. Priestley, Mr. Um...
I'll appeal the ruling of the chair. I'll appeal the ruling of the chair, that she's absolutely right, I'll appeal that rule.
Um, the ruling is, Mr. Mays, please stay Jermaine.
I'll appeal the ruling of the chair, that she's absolutely right, that attendance don't have nothing to do with votes. You say she's absolutely right, you didn't warn her, I'll appeal the ruling of the chair.
Mr. Mays, according to council rules, the purpose of, um, uh, excuse me, is there, and a second?
Yes, Madam Chair, I'll support that appeal.
Okay.
And I got four seconds left on the clock. This pick, who play the game with? I like your style, sir.
All right, so we're gonna put that on the society. So, appeal for ruling that you were not Jermaine to the appeal. All right, and that was presented by Councilman Priestley. Okay. All right, got that. All right, so, um, so, since you were ruling, because I didn't make the ruling, I just said that she was correct. So, um, we will go ahead and just make it an official warning, so that'll be the warning number two. So, we will...
Point of order, Madam Chair.
What is the point?
You did make a ruling, and out your mouth you ruled that Ms. Priestley was correct. That it was not Jermaine. Now, what appeal are we on?
So, we're gonna finish the first one, and then we're gonna go directly into the second one. Okay?
And I'ma also appeal the ruling that Ms. Priestley was not out of order. You say I got a warning, 'cause it wasn't a major breach of, major breach of... I'll appeal the ruling of the chair, as it relates to her, her point of order.
We, we have it now, so, is there, is there a second to his appeal? Did we already get that second?
No, that's a different appeal. I'm appealing you not giving the white lady a warning for a frivolous or not a major breach on her point of order. You, you, you made that point clear, and you wanna do it now, so you gonna have three appeals.
Is, is there, is there a second?
I'll appeal that you didn't warn the white woman.
Appeal that I didn't warn the white woman, is that what it is?
That is, as it relates to her point of order, that wasn't a major breach. You just, you're right. I'm talking in a discussion. You don't honor her point of order.
So, so, Mr. Mays?
But you wanna punish her, and I'll appeal it.
So, let's get it clear. So, we have, um, the second appeal, that, so the second and the third appeal, they are the same.
No, they not. The white woman did a point of order. And when she did that point of order, that's what I'm appealing. You wanna praise my appeal. I'm appealing the one that you ruled that she was okay to do it, and I'm appealing that she did a point of order, and you didn't warn her saying it wasn't a major breach. You calling me talking Mount Eva Worthing's agenda's Mount Main breach?
Mr. Mays, so let's go ahead and...
No, you go ahead and ask us there a second to the appeal. Point of order.
What is your point?
Your job is to ask us there a second appeal on this discrimination that you treat me between Priestley, the white woman, and my wife.
And your job is to be quiet, so the chair can chair. So, with that being said, we are in the middle of the first appeal, and then we have the second appeal, and then we will have the third appeal. So, the third appeal means the second is their second?
Yes, it is.
All right, so Ms. Murphy Carter, she seconded that appeal. So, we're gonna go ahead and go back to the first one. Um, and Mr. Mays have four seconds left on the clock.
Madam Chair, y'all need to cut it out. That's really what I'ma say in four seconds, you showing your ass.
Okay, so, um, thank you, that's your time. And please make sure that you do not use vulgar language and exercise decorum. So, anyone else who'd like it in chair? So, anyone else would like to speak? And Ms. Priestley, and this is the first appeal.
Yes, this is the appeal where he stated that, um, you ruled that he, we kept, you could order without objection. However, we could not because we approved the motion that I made that said we voted in sequence. So, yes, he was out of order with that, and I support the ruling of the Chair.
Thank you. Anyone else would like to speak? Anyone else would like to speak? Okay, so, so now I will utilize my time. So, just like Councilwoman Priestley said, we already voted immediately, to vote immediately, so that will already determine the beginning of the meeting. So, that was the first step. And then the second step is, according to the rule, you cannot utilize privileged motions to gain the floor. It's called for disciplinary actions. And the disciplinary action that we are, that the Chair is giving Councilmember Mays is a first warning for, for one, utilizing the floor to, yeah, utilizing the floor most to gain the floor. It's against council rules, and I will stand by and uphold council rules. So, that's why the Chair had given Mr. Mays his first warning. So, with all that said, uh, yes, a vote will overturn the ruling of the Chair, but a no vote will uphold the ruling of the Chair. Roll call, Madam Clerk.
Ms. Priestley is not in. Ms. Winfrey Carter?
Yes.
Ms. Burns is not in. Mr. Pfeiffer?
No.
Ms. Worthing?
No.
Mr. Mays?
Yes.
Ms. Lewis?
No.
Mr. Murphy?
No.
Vote is one yes, I'm sorry, two yes, four no?
The vote is two yes and, uh, four no. The ruling of the Chair stands. So, now we will go into the second appeal, and the second appeal deals with, um, me ruling that Councilwoman Priestley's point of order, um, was correct. According to, um, according to council rules, we were specifically, um, talking about...
Point of order. You out of order. If I may be recognized, point of order.
Mr. Mays, what, what?
You out of, the rule that talks about what happens after appeal is second. You going into the details, and the rule says that you go to the person that made the appeal. You out of order, and your cronies won't enforce it. I wanna give you your first warning. You would be at two. Now you would be gone.
Okay, so thank you, Mr. Mays.
Oh, point of order. Can you have the, the, the rule read? You've been out of order all week. And I'm all in a point, and then I made it a day of...
Mr. Mays, thank you. So, I stated the appeal, and I will save the reading, the reading of the rule for my time. So, go ahead, Mr. Mays.
Oh, you let vote the rule.
Point of order.
Ms. Priestley?
Um, Mr. Mays did not appeal your second warning.
Uh, I don't hear you.
Mr. Mays did not appeal the second warning.
He didn't, he didn't appeal the second warning?
Correct.
Yeah, so we're, yeah, so we're not on that one yet, so, yeah.
Point of order, Madam Chair. Will you warn the white woman? 'Cause she didn't mess it up.
Mr. Mays, again, go ahead. Point of order, if the point of order denied.
Yeah, hell, you gonna deny, not warning the white woman for frivolous, privileged motions. This becoming clear. I asked a business question. Can you order these agenda changes without objections and we could be on to public speaking? You and the white woman wanna give me a first warning?
Um, Mr. Mays, please, hold. Um, we need the clock to start.
What's gonna happen, I want the city of Flint and everybody watching to know. What's gonna happen? They've been to get my black ass out of here. That's what's been to happen, that he clapping 'cause he white. Ain't nobody in the room clapping but him, but I know who he is. Ed Taylor clapping 'cause he shut down the meeting the other day. I ran his campaign for fourteen years, and now he's an asshole. So, you got distraction in the audience from some assholes. I like to call out assholes.
Point of order. Um, and Mr. Pfeiffer, what's your point?
Can we get the gallery in, in order, please?
Let me say this. This was a case called a point of order.
Excuse me, y'all talking must cease during the point of order. So, audience, please, let's utilize the floor.
Stop the clock, baby.
Thank you.
Go back and stop the clock.
Okay, so...
I don't know what Mr. Pfeiffer said, but it was a case called a...
Okay, uh, excuse me, excuse me. So, Mr. Murphy?
My colleague cannot be calling members of the audience or staff members assholes. That is out of order.
You are correct.
Let me...
So, not done. So, you had point of order granted, so Mr. Mays, you gotta watch, watch our language. And, 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 Mr. Mays, wait a minute. So, in terms of the time, they started a little late, so we will go ahead and start the clock now because they started late when you began to speak. So, please start the clock. Mr. Mays, proceed.
Let me say this. I'm gonna call him asshole, Ed Taylor. I'm gonna call you an asshole, Mr. Murphy, and Adele Lewis, and the rest of y'all assholes. It was a case called a cussing canoos. If it ain't to even a cuss.
Mr. Mays, accord, according to... Please do. According to council rules, you cannot use vulgar language during council meetings.
I'll get my black ass threw out anyway.
Um, Mr. Mays, that is really like your third warning, so, so you, so according to, according to the disorientating subsection, you're being disorderly in this meeting by continuously to use profanity and vulgar language, so we're asking you to leave.
And you can ask all you want, I'm elected, and this is where I'm at. I'm not gonna be discriminated.
Mr. Mays, you have been, Mr. Mays, according to the disorientating subsection, you have violated the council rules.
You violated it when you would remove and warn your damn set.
Um, please, Officer Metcalf, please come and remove Mr. Mays.
Officer Metcalf, you come walk me out, and on the way out, I'm gonna let you know that y'all are discriminating against me with a white woman privileged most. You didn't discriminate by now, you, you can thank you didn't overtalk me, but I got all kind of platforms to deal with your black ass.
Well, please use them, but not here. Please, you don't have the floor.
On your discriminatory, hating, cheap head, black ass.
You don't have the floor.
Oh, I got my seat, my leg.
And I do apologize for the first...
You're gonna be recalled out of your...
For having the council person...
You're gonna move, black woman.
So, thank you. Thank you so much.
With your discriminatory racist ass. Every fucking meet. Every fucking meet.
On the video.
The same vibe. Every fucking meet. I got it. I'm trying to thank you, there's one else I wanna say. With your discriminatory asshole. Look, I hope y'all separate that shit and get that public safety ban through. Folks, I'm here getting killed inside, and here playing them asshole games. That's a nasty motherfucker.
Mr. Mays?
I can't stand...
Thank you. Mr. Metcalf, Mr. Metcalf, please, he is disturbing the meeting.
Double standards.
And this, yeah.
Please, Mr. Metcalf, we would like to proceed with the meeting. Is it possible to remove council person to Mays? Thank you. Alright, so back to the meeting. So, now we are, so now we are to vote on our two additions to the agenda.
Point of order.
Uh, go, go ahead, yeah?
Um, I do believe we need to, um, finish up the appeals.
Oh, okay. Sorry about that. So, this appeal is Mr. Mays stating that... One second. Alright, so Mr. Mays stating that, uh, council person, about the way that I've, um, voted, that I approved the point of order by Councilwoman Priestley. That's what it was about. So, is there, I, I really don't have, um, a, a comment. Mr. Mays, he was, I don't have comment. So, since he's not here, wanna open the floor up to the body. Any, any discussion? Okay, so being that I was last to speak, I ruled, I ruled in favor of Ms. Priestley because Mr. Mays was not Jermaine to the specific appeal at hand. So, if voting of a yes will overturn and reverse the ruling of the Chair, voting of a no will sustain the ruling of the Chair. Roll call, Madam Clerk.
Ms. Winfrey Carter?
Yes.
Ms. Burns?
Yes.
Mr. Pfeiffer?
I abstain because it's a moot point.
Ms. Worthing?
No.
Ms. Lewis?
No.
Murphy?
No.
Ms. Priestley?
No.
Vote is two yes, four no, one abstention?
Oh.
Two yes, four no, one abstention?
Vote is two yes, four no, one abstention. The ruling of the Chair is upheld. So, the third and final appeal that we have is that I didn't warn a white woman. Any discussion? Any discussion? Alright, a voting of no will, um, uphold the ruling of the Chair. A yes will reverse it. Roll call, Madam Chair.
Yes.
Mr. Pfeiffer?
I abstain. It's a moot point.
Ms. Worthing?
No.
Ms. Lewis?
No.
Mr. Murphy?
No.
Ms. Priestley?
No.
Ms. Winfrey Carter?
Yes.
Vote is two yes, four no, one abstention?
Vote is two yes, four no, one abstention. The ruling of the Chair stands. So, now we can move on to the additions to the agenda. We are looking at resolution number one. One second, let me pull it up. Alright, so we are looking to add, add on resolution number one, and that is the resolution to do all things necessary to provide additional weekend police patrol in the city of Flint. We're looking to add that to the agenda. Alright, roll call, Madam Clerk.
Mr. Pfeiffer?
Yes.
Ms. Worthing?
No.
Ms. Lewis?
Yes.
Mr. Murphy?
Yes.
Ms. Priestley?
Yes.
Ms. Winfrey Carter?
Yes.
Ms. Burns?
Yes.
Vote is six yes, one no?
Vote is six yes, one no. So, add-on resolution will be added to the agenda. Alright, so we are looking at add-on number two. Add-on number two deals with the resolution approving the reappointment of Tom Promancechel. It, y'all probably slaughtered that. Sorry, Tom, to the city...
Tony.
Tony, oh, okay, sorry. Put my glasses. Tony Promancechel to the Citywide Advisory Council. So, roll call, Madam Chair.
Ms. Worthing?
Yes.
Ms. Lewis?
Yes.
Mr. Murphy?
Yes.
Ms. Priestley?
Yes.
Ms. Winfrey Carter?
Yes.
Ms. Burns?
Yes.
Mr. Pfeiffer?
Yes.
Vote is seven yes, zero no?
Alright, the vote is seven yes, zero no. So, now, so those who items are added. So, now we are on to the closed executive session. Attorney Kim, what is the session about?
Uh, uh, Madam Chair, the, uh, law department requests closed session here to discuss the, uh, Ajax, uh, the, the case, uh, Ajax Materials Appeal, uh, that this, that this, uh, body requested and directed us to file approximately a year and a half ago. Um, the email that I, I sent out, the, the, uh, the order that was entered about a few weeks ago, uh, to all the members, and, uh, one of the members of the council wanted to discuss this in closed session, so, uh, we submitted the request to the, uh, clerk.
Okay. Alright, thank you, Attorney Kim. Um, any, any debate?
I move that we, um, go into closed session.
Okay, so, um, there's a motion for going to closed session. Is there a second? Support, alright, and the supporter by Ms. Worthing. Any debate?
Yes.
Go ahead, mister.
Yes, I request it. Um, we go into closed session to discuss, um, next steps possibly, um, and just to update in-house of some prelim, preliminary conversation with my colleagues on, um, the, uh, ruling of the, um, appeal for Ajax that is, um, adjacent to the third ward off of Copleton Road. It, it should be real brief, so it shouldn't take long.
Thank you, Mr. Murphy. Anyone else would like to comment? On first round? Alright, no one else on first round? Anyone else in the second round? Alright, no one else, uh, Mr. Murphy, are you moving towards your mic? Okay, anyone in the second round? Alright, so seeing none, we will go ahead and call for the vote to go into closed session. Um, roll call, Madam Clerk.
Ms. Lewis?
Yes.
Mr. Murphy?
Yes.
Ms. Priestley?
Yes.
Ms. Winfrey Carter?
Yes.
Ms. Burns?
Yes.
Mr. Pfeiffer?
Yes.
Worthing?
Yes.
Vote is seven yes, zero no?
The vote is seven yes, zero no. Um, we, the council will now go into a closed session.
He knows where.
Yeah. I stayed on-- I stayed on the island for conferences at the Island House. That's the one at the end of the road, right around before the curve. Oh, yeah, it'd be nice. And I took a dinner cruise that went underneath the bridge. I've been on one through the locks, too. A dinner cruise, yeah, you go on-- they have one of the fairies, it's equipped with kitchen, and you have dinner. And it was through the Michigan Community College Business Officers Association. It was really fun. But, I mean, not only is it-- was it a great conference? Because it was, we always got really good information. But the locale was great. We, you know, you'd go to different colleges, different community colleges around the state, and then one conference a year, you'd go to a maybe resort type thing, like Grand Travis Resort. We did that one.
Send your email just to remind you. Yeah, because all they need to do is just go here and just take a rest.
I did the same thing.
Because I'm an old woman, it's kind of dangerous if somebody were to--
Yeah. I know. I studied-- I studied McDonald's to grab a hamburger, because I had meat and breakfast at ten o'clock. Oh, I did. Not only that, farm fresh eggs. I think late yesterday. I should have brought you a dozen. No, she gives them away. Yeah. I brought a dozen home for my niece. It's my job when I'm there to go collect the eggs and just give the chickens at night. I don't know, she has brown and green. Like blue, you know, greenish blue. She made, she's got twelve babies coming Wednesday, and she picked them for the colored eggs that they lay. So, she's got twelve that haven't started laying. She's got older chickens that we get three to four eggs a day. Chickens. Yeah, I don't feed the horse. I don't, because she gets medications. Well, she has cushions. We don't have an attorney here yet. She has one. She's looking for a horse that thinks it's a cocker. She wants, she wants a horse that thinks it's a cocker. This one thinks, knows it's terrier. So, this horse, I gave it, I went out and got it some treats that I bought for her for Christmas. So, I went and took her one in the pasture, and she turned her head, and I said, "Cece, come here." And she kind of leaned over, and I put my head on the other side of her head, and she tucked her chin and underneath, her nose underneath my chin. It kind of went, "Oh." Yeah, that was horsey love. She gives her middle foot to my friend, but, oh.
It is now six twenty-five, and special affairs meeting will now be returned to order. Roll call, Madam Clerk.
Okay. Mr. Mays is not in. Ms. Lewis?
Present.
Mr. Murphy? Ms. Priestley?
Present.
Ms. Winfrey Carter?
Present.
Ms. Burns?
Present.
Mr. Pfeiffer?
Present.
Ms. Worthing?
Present.
We have seven members present.
Are there seven members present? So, next on the agenda, we have public speaking. Are there any public speakers?
Hello. My name is R. L. Mitchell, Madam Chair. But just for today, my name is Johnny Cash, like I stated last week. Because Johnny is a patron, the name is patron, and America birthday was about last week. Johnny come marching home again. But I'd say that, but talking about the affairs of the city of Flint, especially that Hurley Hospital situation. Or about, I read in the, I see you done, you done replaced, um, the Gentry, uh, the NAACP, uh, Gentry, with, it supposed to be Roger Jones, but the mayor done put the empty seat in there because Roger Jones supposed to have a better understanding about how to deal with peoples like Murphy and that schoolteacher. Going home to get her guns and supposed to be representing the schools of the education of America. And, uh, and like, and Tim, I'm telling y'all know what nationality you is. You probably, it look like you the one that, that started that. And, uh, like I say, uh, about the money, and that TikTok, ever since I heard TikTok want to send me some money. I want to figure out how to tell them how to get me some money in my hand. The best way to use it is using you peoples, always kicking out peoples in the door. Like Mr. Jones, the holy, oh, that Ajax situation. If she would have got her hands around her neck to get you and Murphy off of the holy ground, she would have did it and talk about, and miss, the school, hey, you still texting ladies? Look at me, worse than, you up there talking about getting Mays away from, through the affairs of the city. Get you, what you gonna do about your little goons? When you gonna bring them in here for a weekend up? I see Tyson getting rocks in his jaws, anybody right now, talking, look at him looking like Superman. And without crack, click. I mean, what, man, what you looking like that for? I got three more minutes, don't I? No, no, how many more minutes I got? Huh? Ten seconds, like, yeah. And like, uh, like Hurley Hospital, like I say. Man, like, about that? Man, look.
Thank you so much.
Ain't gonna thank you so much. You better get that cryo roll fixed, yeah. And just imagine come up there, I just wanted water coming out.
Mr. Mitchell, that's your time. Thank you. Next, public speaker, please.
Hello, my name is Yelandrea Gentry. And I'm on the, um, Juneteenth committee. And I don't know if you guys were aware that, um, on, uh, the, uh, it was festivities that were going on from the ninth of June until the nineteenth. And on June the seventh, um, the mayor's office shut down one of the festivities, which was the retouching painting of the Black Lives Matter mural. And, um, I just wanted to know, uh, you know, the reason why, you know, um, the public wants to know me as the public. Um, according to, uh, meeting, um, with, um, Mrs. Deloney and, what, Sharon, Pastor Sharon Sandler. It was a meeting held with Pastor Sharon Sandler, um, Mrs. E. Hill Deloney, which has, um, been having the Juneteenth, um, parade for the past fifty-one years. And, um, it was the mayor, Mayor Neely and Sandra, Sandra Branch. Um, well, I think Mrs. Sandra Branch had to leave the, the meeting early. And, um, the mayor stated that, um, when the Black Lives Matter mural was painted, MAGA supporters demanded that they had a mega mural painted also. And the mayor refused. And the, um, MAGA threatened to sue the city. And to avoid a lawsuit, Mayor Neely supposedly gave them an unpaved road. And they refused. But they can't say that we didn't offer.
Thank you, ma'am. Thank you so much. That's your time. Next, public speaker.
Good evening, council. I'm J. Marie Arbor, Seventh Ward resident and also spokesperson for Seventh Ward Friends and Neighbors, a Concerned Citizens Coalition. Regarding the vacancy created as a result of Councilwoman Herkenrother's July one resignation, it's understood that charter requires council to appoint an interim council member within thirty days. Presumably, that appointment will be based largely upon qualified applicants' resumes and letters of interest, et cetera, which will be submitted to you soon by our city clerk, Davina Donahue. Residents across the Seventh Ward have expressed a desire to learn more about the overall process of the appointment. And most importantly, we wish to learn something about each of the applicants themselves prior to that appointment being made. Therefore, a Seventh Ward interim council forum is scheduled for Thursday, July twentieth, six p.m., with doors opening at five thirty at the Brennan Senior Center. All are welcome. Clerk Donahue has graciously agreed to be present to address the appointment process. Now, should any council applicants be listening, your presence is requested and necessary so that attendees may be introduced to you and engage with you. And finally, because you, council, will collectively decide the outcome of this important appointment, your presence is requested and encouraged so that you too may become familiar with the applicants off the page. For further information, applicants may contact me at eight one zero two nine three eight seven zero six. And I have flyers here for your reference. Thank you.
Thank you.
May I distribute these?
Please do.
Thank you.
Next speaker, please.
Evening, council. My name is Dr. Tom Pedrone and I'm an associate professor at Wayne State University. I research how to end persistent inequality in predominantly black communities in Michigan, like Flint. Why do sidewalks still need to be repaired in the First Ward? At last Wednesday's council meeting, we learned, at least according to Councilman Pfeiffer, a white man like me, that it's the third term black councilman from Ward one who is at fault. Councilman Pfeiffer, let me say this as a white man like you. It is immoral when we white people are not aware of our own history and our own complicity in the conditions in which many black or poor families live. When we, as white people, don't know about redlining or don't understand the way our cities, including Flint, have systematically enabled the well-being of most white people while constraining the life chances of most black people, it shows that we do not know our own history. The good news is that the information is out there, including in Flint libraries right now for free, in books like Demolition Means Progress: Flint, Michigan and the Fate of the American Metropolis, or the recent special issue of Critical Sociology called Flint and the Racialized Geography of Indifference. Ignorance of this history does not let us off the hook. Genuinely loving this city would mean taking the time to learn about the long, sad, and ongoing history of Flint urban renewal benefiting mostly well-to-do whites on the back of the city's poor and the city's black people, especially in the North End. The benefits that are supposed to accrue to ordinary people from these initiatives, and I'll wrap it up, almost never come because the well-to-do and well-connected are always making sure their plate is filled up eight times over, as with the ARPA money, before the poor get any. Our job and our responsibility as white people is to put an end to that tragic and brutal history. The weight of our soul as white people is determined by the degree to which we refuse to become the errand boys of those well-to-do people who can never get enough.
All right, sir.
When more of us are ready to do that, the First Ward and its sidewalks will look better. Thank you.
Thank, thank you. Next public speaker, please.
Good evening and hello, everyone. Thank you for taking this time for me to speak. I appreciate it. Um, as you know, the city of Flint has no director. Ma'am, what's your name? Deborah, I'm sorry. My name is Deborah Winston Roberts. I am a citizen here in Flint of the Seventh Ward. Okay, thank you. Uh, and I was concerned about the director for DPW. I understand that Mr. Edwards is the interim person. And with the problems that we have with water pressure and pipes exploding and such things, I am very concerned that we are going into four, five months without any news on who would be the permanent replacement. And I would just like to know as well, with, I'm sure, most of the city, know what's going on as far as that goes. Appreciate your time.
Thank you. Next, next public speaker, please.
Hello, how everybody doing? I'm Byshaun Jefferson. I'm born and raised in Flint since nineteen eighty, February the twelfth. This is my first time ever coming to any city council meeting, so I just wanted to introduce myself and let, you know what I'm saying, y'all know who I am. I don't know who any of y'all are. I swear to God. And I've been, you know what I'm saying, in Flint forty-three years. Not to say that, you know what I'm saying, I'm not aware of, we have a council team, but I, I've been a part of Flint since Woodrow Stanley, since Omar Sams, and also Eric Mays. I ain't gonna lie to you. I came here for Eric Mays, because he know where we're at. He know where we're at. But what I want to do, what I do want to say is, why do we have more dispensaries than we got public schools? And, like, that's, that's, I'm gonna let y'all know more once y'all get more familiar with me. But that's really all I want to say. We got a lot of dispensaries and not enough, you know what I'm saying, schools for them to learn. Thank y'all. Welcome.
And thank you and welcome. All right. Next speaker.
Yeah, Arthur Wilson. I wasn't gonna take my time to talk about you because this is ridiculous. Ms. Friesley, Eva Worthing, Quincy and Mr. Pfeiffer, I thought you all could put, you two could put your personal differences aside because the way that Liddell Lewis is running this meeting is a joke. And Eric Mays did not violate those rules, man, point of order and point of information. He had four seconds left, man. And all he said was her attendance record. That's bull crap, man. But what I came up here for, I'm on Flint to know that we are getting shafted by Ashley Capital. One of the main things is, how can they tell you three thousand jobs without anybody purchasing the buildings yet? They going by square footage. Three thousand jobs for square footage. They getting ready to ask for seventy-two million dollars for something Race or Trust should have done. If you read the White House fact sheet back in two thousand and ten when President Obama passed it, it said Race or Trust cleans up and repurposed that property, not just hold it as is. If y'all vote for that, man, y'all really do need to get put out of office. Because they keep on coming here, you remember Otto World? Where we had to tear it down? Y'all gonna give them seventy-two million dollars and they say eighty, twenty split, we get fifteen million. They get seventy-two million. That's a joke, man. And I can go on and, on and on. Do your research, man. Eleven, eleven, I talked to Grant Trigger, eleven million parts per trillion on one side of the property. He said it takes fifty-two million dollars to remove a hundred and fifty square miles or a hundred and fifty square feet of, uh, contaminated soil. Fifty-two million. So why does Ashley Capital need seventy-two million? He couldn't even answer that. Man, don't let, don't give them Flint money, man. They keep on coming in here and we keep on making millionaires.
Any more public speakers?
Hello, council. My name is Baru Belin. Um, I'm born and raised here in Flint. I am a resident of Las Vegas now, but I'm here more than I'm home. Um, what I want to come up here today is to speak to the council about a consideration of small businesses in the city of Flint. Um, our city is majority, the majority of our city is minority. Uh, and we have no programs in place to help assist small business owners to win contracts, city contracts. Um, and I'm curious if, if we were to look back, say, in the last ten years of all the contracts that has been awarded in the city. I'm real curious is, see, how many of those companies that was awarded those contracts were small businesses in the city of Flint? And I would, I would believe that it's probably very small. Uh, we just had a city of Flint demolition contract that came out. It was a total of, I believe, fourteen properties. Uh, I think those bids came in about two hundred thousand dollars to do the work. And no one from the city of Flint attended that mandatory bid walk. So I kind of questioned different people that I know was in the business and what I, the consensus I got back from everyone was they didn't know about it. And if they came down, they didn't feel that they had an opportunity to win it anyway. So there's programs in place. We look at Detroit, Michigan, we can look at Memphis, Tennessee, several cities in Texas, where they have, the city have SBE programs in place to help support local businesses, set aside work or requirements to have primes do business, subcontract out to, uh, local small businesses. So this is something I really hope that you all look at because I think the small business community in Flint needs it. And if we can build that community, the small business, I think that will help the city out a lot. That's my time, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else would like to speak to council? Anyone else? Well, seeing that there are no one else, we will close public speaking and open the floor for council response.
Madam Chair.
Mr. Pfeiffer.
Yeah, I'm gonna address the, uh, the gentleman bringing up race. That's, everybody brings up race. Race is the biggest factor or non-factor realistically in the city. Um, you got a black mayor, you got a black city administrator, you got a majority black council, you got a black police chief, but yet it's the white person's fault. It's nonsense. It's absolute nonsense. Race is not a factor. Race is not a factor when it comes to sidewalks not being fixed. It has completely to do with someone's ability and fight to get a job done. Effort and merit go more than race. Plain and simple. Thank you, Madam Chair.
I thank you, Mr. Pfeiffer. Uh, anyone else would like to speak?
Yes.
Oh, Mr. Murphy?
First, the Seventh Ward. Um, to the, the young lady who spoke about the appointments of the Seventh Ward City Council. We do have a process in place. And I would encourage the Seventh Ward residents to follow what city council have going on. When you guys get ready to do a form, do a form. When you guys are getting ready to vote for a candidate, when they do the special city council. Right now, the Seventh Ward is in the hands of the city council. We're gonna have an application process, we're gonna have an interview process. And I encourage the Seventh Ward residents, you and all the residents that, um, and I did attend the Seventh Ward community meeting. I would encourage you guys to come and watch the process and what city council got. Because we do got a process that we gotta, um, take place. I also wanted to, um, Baru, um, I look forward to working with you. I'm on the land bank board. I want to make sure that, um, we're trying to do things for minority contractors. Art Wilson, you talked about Ashley Capital. Um, I have been meeting with Ashley Capital. I have not been brought, I heard, I got word that some of us is being brought by the mayor or being told what to do. I'm told what to do by the Father, the Son, and the Holy Ghost, and that's who put me up in here. Not Ashley Capital, not Mayor Neely. I, y'all got that in our head that y'all think I'm talking, listening to somebody else? That's not true. Seventy-two, um, Seventy-two, um, the city of Flint is not paying seventy-two million dollars for Ashley Capital to come, that's not true. If you find some paperwork that say that the city of Flint will pay seventy-two million dollars, that is not true. Seventy-two million dollars of investment to clean up an environmental, um, site, um, regardless of, when it went bankruptcy. The bankruptcy judge should have made General Motors pay for the seventy-two million dollars or the ninety-something million dollars of the site before they, uh, uh, signed off on the bankruptcy. That's who we should have been going to, the bankruptcy judge, not Race or Trust, not Ashley Capital, but now we got a developer company that wanna come in here and clean up a site, who else? Bring me some more names in here to show us another developer that's wanting to come and put their own money up to clean up a site. I'm not finna just go and say no to Ashley Capital, 'cause somebody wanna, uh, make us feel some type of way, 'cause they think we oughta believe what they believe. Show me another developer that's finna come here and clean up a site with their own money.
Alright, thank you, Mr. Murphy. Anyone else would like to participate in council response?
Madam Chair.
Ms. Priestley.
Yes, um, Anne Marie, I was at the Seventh Ward meeting as well, and if I could come, I would like to hear what people have to say, but ultimately, my, my decisions will be made here in these chambers, and I do think that, um, the thoughts and feelings of the Seventh Ward hopefully can take place on this, but ultimately, their decision is at the pa- ballot box. Also, um, the gentleman speaking about the sidewalks, there's bad sidewalks in the Fourth Ward, there's bad sidewalks in the Seventh Ward, there's bad sidewalks in the Fifth Ward, they're all over this city. Okay, and the Third Ward. I have a neighbor who is handicapped, who actually got down and resettled some of his sidewalk that was torn up by city trees, himself. And he could barely walk, and he was on the ground doing that. There's nothing that says that people can't do it for themselves. However... How, yes, it is sad, but however, this is not racist. This has nothing to do with race. It has to do with the city not taking care of its property. That's what it has to do with. I don't care where you live, any area in the city has those issues. Also, I mean, how much, um, about the brownfield tax abatement, this is actually allowed by law. We're not giving them money. We are not giving them money. And number two, the only people who've spoken to me about that is Ashley Capital. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Madam Chair.
Thank you, Ms. Priestley, Ms. Worthing.
Uh, first, I'd like to thank those who spoke today to council. It's been a rough few years on this council. Um, it's become about race, hatred, just obstruction, and unfortunately, that's why Ms. Herkenroter resigned, is because it's hard to be a part of that consistently, mentally and physically. It, it makes me sad and upset for our city. But what I did wanna say is that you came to us today with real issues that you would like for us to look into and solve, instead of just spouting hatred or opinions about who we are as people. And that is what I ran for council for, and I know that's what Ally ran for council for, is to work hard for our residents on real issues that matter to you. And, um, I just wanna say I appreciate that, because I'm interested in hearing what's going on, and I would, I'm sure as everyone else would, like to help you with these issues. I'll be there next Thursday if I can, I wanna make promises in case something comes up. I'd like to make a referral to see where we are on the DPW replacement, um, with the, uh, the mayor and administration, because it is an important, uh, role. And then also, as far as the public schools, uh, question, that is a question for the school board. We recently, um, have a new school board, I'm hoping that things get better, um, but it's just sad what's happened to our buildings, to our programs, and I'm telling you, they don't pay enough t- for teachers. They're not on par with other districts as far as payment. So when you can't get quality teachers, then you can't get the students that wanna come. So there's just so many problems, but it's not a council issue for schools, it's a school board issue. Thank you.
Alright, thank you, Ms. Worthing. Anyone else would like to comment? Public speaking?
Madam Chair.
Ms. Burns.
Thank you. I'm gonna disagree with my colleagues, and I'm gonna say this, as a black woman, we live in a predominantly black city, race will always be a factor. We can't change that. We, we cannot change that. And it is uncomfortable, some of my colleagues don't like talking about it. We, we don't get along here, but race is a factor, race is a factor, um, generally where they would put even some of the dispensaries. They tend to think, you know, minorities of black will smoke more marijuana, which not everybody smoke marijuana, and I even suggest to some people, if they need to calm down. But we also, race is a factor, Baru, when we talk about getting those contracts. That is a serious, a serious issue. We gave sixteen million dollars to the land bank and no minority contractors, well, some are, but we're not getting them local. So when we talk about local and minority, it is an issue. And when we talk about we have a black mayor, black city administrator, a black police chief, you are correct, we do, Councilman Pfeiffer, but that same black mayor and black police chief sent six people to arrest residents at a special meeting in the, at the dome. So some things are an abuse of power. Everyone should have sidewalks. No one should have to ask for them. If a resident calls in, then they should be given. But I know for a fact, it's not just because they don't like each other, that's clear they don't. I mean, that will probably not change in my lifetime, that those two will be able to bridge the gap. But the part is, no one, the residents shouldn't have to suffer because of that. They shouldn't. He is the mayor to everyone in the city, whether we dislike him or like him, agree or disagree. I do, I don't always agree with him, but if it's something that the mayor, it's for the people, I'm going to vote for, because I'm here for the residents. And it is a problem, he does withhold things from the Seventh, I mean, from the First Ward. He doesn't, he doesn't to punish Councilman Mays. They don't get along. He used to tell me, don't take the calls from, from Councilman Mays. I got fired every day, and I told everyone back then, because I wanted to make sure the residents still got a voice. They deserve to have a voice, and that is shut down.
Thank you, Ms. Burns.
Thank you.
Anyone else would like to speak?
Yes, Madam Chair.
Ms. Murphy Carter.
Um, thank you. First, I would like to thank all of the, um, residents, um, for, um, for being engaged in the process, and, um, coming forth and bringing us your, um, your insight, your opinions, um, concerns, and issues. I just want, I just wanna say, and just wanna piggyback off of what Councilwoman Burns, um, just, um, said, race is a factor. And, you know, it's important to note that, that, um, race in the context of Flint, it should not be limited to the water crisis, because we all know that that was systemic, um, racism. We know that. But racial, when we, when we talk about race, you gotta think about racial disparities, um, and socioeconomic, um, factors intersect in complex ways, um, affecting various aspects of residents' lives, such as education, healthcare, and employment opportunities. And I don't know, Councilwoman Priestley, I think you probably, um, misunderstood, or probably didn't understand where the gentleman from, um, Wayne State University was coming from. It wasn't just about the sidewalks, but he was basically saying that council members, you need to be in touch with the community, not just in your ward, but the entire city, okay? Race is a factor. And, and we gotta do something about it. We, we must, um, you know, address the issues of race in this city.
Thank you, Ms. Murphy Carter. So seeing that there are no one, no other council members to speak, I'll go ahead and utilize my time. Um, so I would like to thank the rest of the public speakers as well, and also encourage more individuals to please come up and speak, this is your council, let your voice be heard. And I would also like to encourage my colleagues to take on the challenge. Uh, I know that the city of Flint has programs, um, I, I can't remember, I know Tyler, Tyler from Small Business, uh, he may be able to assist you, because, um, because he has, um, a lot of connections in that area. Um, but I can't say that they have specifically what you need, but I encourage a council person, so let's use our energy in a positive way to address that, to seek that out. You know, I took on a few initiatives, such as fire safety, so let's go ahead and I, I encourage this, let's, let's use our energy for the good, so we can address some of these things, because it just takes council people to, um, get engaged, put some fire behind, um, administration and whomever, to make this happen. And I also would like to talk about the painting of the street. So from what I gathered, was that the painting of the street was a liability, and, and, and fe- excuse me, interfered with the integrity of the roads. And because of that, and because of that, the city, um, and the state viewed that as a liability, and that's why they said that they was not gonna go forward. You know, because if someone tried to break on the mural and say they slide into something because they cannot stop because of the ground is painted. So, not making excuses, but just saying that was the rationale, and I can't make any excuse why they told you late, why they went along with the process too late, I have no rationale, but that was my understanding. So, um, with that being said, council comments is now closed, and we will move on to the consent agenda. Ms. Priestley?
I make a motion to adopt the consent agenda.
Okay, with, with any separation?
That's, that's actually not needed to say.
Okay, oh, okay, so let's see, so you wanna adopt the consent, um, agenda with any separation?
We're in a board.
Go ahead.
We're in special affairs. But, so it's moved to council?
Okay. Yeah, you, you, you're correct, yeah. Language matters.
I, I, I will restate my motion, since it has not been seconded yet. I move that we, I make a motion to move the consent agenda to council.
Okay. Alright, is it with any separations?
Yeah. Support, yes.
Very well, so it has been moved by Ms. Priestley, supported by Ms. Worthing.
Madam Chair.
Ms. Priestley?
I'd like to separate two, three, zero, one, six, two.
Alright, give me one second. Alright. Is that two, three, zero, one, six, two?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
Two, three, zero, one, one, eight, two, three, zero, one, seven, seven. Those are appointments, those last two are appointments.
Okay. One, one, eight?
I have questions about those. Two, three, zero, one, one, eight, two, three, zero, one, seven, seven, and then the first agenda item I had to scroll up, two, three, zero, one, six, two.
Okay, got it.
Madam Chair.
Oh, also, Madam Chair, I'd also, um, like to separate add-on number one.
Is add-on number one?
Yes.
Okay. Alright, give me one second, just my hat on. Okay, I believe I heard Ms. Worthing next.
Um, I'd just like to separate two, three, zero, one, nine, zero, and two, three, zero, one, nine, one.
Alright. Yeah, two, three, zero, one, nine, zero, and two, three, zero, one, nine, one. Alright, any more separations? Okay. Well, seeing none, we will go ahead and... Alright, so we will go ahead and do, uh, we do a roll call vote to adopt the consent agenda. So, Madam Chair?
Mr. Murphy?
Yes.
Ms. Priestley?
Yes.
Ms. Murphy Carter?
Yes.
Ms. Burns?
Yes.
Mr. Pfeiffer?
Yes.
Ms. Worthing?
Yes.
Ms. Lewis?
Yes.
Vote is seven yes, zero no?
Vote is seven yes, zero no. The consent agenda has been adopted and sent to council, so now the chair will introduce, excuse me, entertain a motion.
Madam Chair, I make a motion to move two, three, zero, one, six, two to council.
Okay, there's been a motion to move two, three, zero, one, six, two to council, any support? Any support?
Support.
Alright, supported by Mr. Pfeiffer, any discussion?
Madam Chair.
Ms. Priestley?
See, in, in light of the fact that, um, we do expect recommendations from all the grant fund applications, um, for ARPA dollars to be received by council for our next finance committee meeting, I do not support this, uh, item at all. Those funds will be completely reviewed through to- tomorrow evening, and those recommendations for funding should be sent to the mayor's, um, desk. So this is very late in the game, the work has been done by the committee, and so I do not support this.
I thank you, Ms. Priestley. Anyone else?
Yes.
Uh, Ms., uh, Mr. Murphy?
Thank you. Well, although you may not support this, um, resolution of the ARPA funds, I think this is a resolution that Councilman Tanya Burns put together, um, it was important to do something, and I think what this resolution was, was an attempt to try to do something, to try to get some movement with the ARPA funding, because we wasn't really getting no kind of information, and we had, um, my colleagues had called, um, two or three special city council meetings to deal with ARPA funding, and we had no one to really come and, um, talk to the public or us. And I attended the meetings, because as a councilman for the Third Ward, residents was reaching out to me, businesses was reaching out to me, trying to figure out when was money going to be expedited. So it's been a, a roller coaster ride for, um, the way these ARPA fundings has been spent or being distributed, and, um, all of a sudden, we have arrived to the point where they are making recommendations, and, um, this resolution that was drafted is allegedly, in your opinion, a mute point, because you feel a certain way about a resolution that was drafted by my colleague, due to the fact that they were trying to make some movement. So I understand the spirit of my colleague putting together this resolution, um, I just want you to share space that, um, people are frustrated with the process and how the ARPA applications and the distribution of the funding. I am frustrated, and I'm not gonna make no secret about it. Rather, they send us recommendations tomorrow, it's not here today. We got a special affairs meeting, we got a city council meeting. I know my colleague in the Fifth Ward, Jerry Murphy Carter, requested to get a copy of the list of the two hundred and something people who applied. I'm not sure she's received it as of today, but those are some preliminary things that we wanted to look at prior to, um, anything in making a decision, so, um, congratulations on whoever on the ARPA committee that finally getting to a point to where we go see some kind of movement, but I'm just not totally against this resolution, um, that was drafted in the effort to try to get some movement done with the ARPA done. Uh, I am very disappointed in the process and how it take place, and I know from, um, talking to you guys, that it's... And I know from, um, talking to you guys that it was a lot of teeth pulling in order to, um, get some movement on the committee and whoever was behind closed doors, um, that was, um, working with the applications. To the chair, through you, to the administration, um, to Clyde Edwards, um, who is taking, who is serving in the capacity of Lottie Ferguson now that she's not here anymore? Who is overseeing those ARPA applications and the process?
Madam Chair, through you, to, uh, Councilman Murphy, that is, uh, a situation that is ongoing in the process right now. There's, uh, her job was posted, they're interviewing, uh, setup of interviews. But there's also been, uh, some assignment to, uh, Latrice Brown. She is somebody who had been working with Lottie and had been, she had been attending the meetings and she still is, taking notes. But she is not, uh, in position to take that primary role.
So through you, to, through you, to Clyde, who will be handling this process moving forward since that we close to, based on my colleague in the fourth ward, Judy Priestley, since we are close to bringing applications or recommendations to city council? Who will be facilitating moving forward?
Well, at this point, probably I would say that, uh, Ms. Brown, Latrice Brown, will, um, be a facilitator of providing that information. Since she does attend the meeting, she will be able to get that information about the recommendations that they, um, put together and forward that to the administration.
All right, thank you, Mr. Murphy, and thank you, Mr. Edwards. All right, anyone else in the first round?
Madam Chair.
Ms. Burns?
Thank you, I'm Mr. Edwards. Um, my question is, I sent the email for the second time in regards to what was the balance in the ARPA committee. You sent the email back stating you required, wanted me to do an in-person meeting with you about that. And I don't deem that to be necessary. Why is it you want me to have an in-person meeting with you when my request is how much is in the ARPA funds? And what has it been spent on?
Through the chair, to, uh, Councilwoman Burns, I don't recall, you know, I mean, my, my honest answer is that I don't recall that, that, uh, particular request or that reply, so...
Would you like me to show you the email? Because we go through this. I'll give you the email, and I resent it to you last night, probably about four AM because I was still up. Because I'm concerned about these ARPA funds in the committee. My other question is, has anyone quit on that ARPA funds committee?
I...
I was told Mr. Leon Alamin is not there anymore. Is he still there?
Through the, through the chair, to Ms. Burns, I'm not, uh, familiar with whether that particular individual has resigned or otherwise.
Okay, is, is this ARPA fund meeting our advisory committee, are they meeting at the Flint Public Library?
If, if, is that a...
I'm asking you, are, are they meeting? The last time we were here, when Ms. Ferguson was here, which prompted her to send me an email which stated from you that if Ms. Burns has any and all questions, that she is to schedule a meeting to meet in person, which would be in your office. I'm not going to do that because it doesn't require that. I want to be in the public, talk about ARPA funds in the public, so I'm transparent and this administration is transparent. Now, is this board meeting? And, because not in public? Is this board meeting?
I don't know about the meeting, I mean, I'm, that's what I'm telling you, um, your, your question is, you were asking about a location. And I'm, I'm here to tell you, I don't know anything about their location.
Okay, let's don't say location then. Do you know if the, is the city administrator, is the ARPA advisory board meeting?
As far as I know, yes, they're meeting.
Okay, how many times have they met?
I'd, I would have to get that information for you.
Okay, because I'm told that they're meeting at the public library, they're having dinner catered in. And I was also told that Mr. Leon Alamin is not on there anymore. But as the city administrator, I know that you know, because that's your job to know. I know, I know that you know that.
Uh, well, I beg to differ with you, but that's fine, we don't have to, we don't have to have that...
Okay, I mean, if you don't know about the, the ninety-four point seven million dollars, Mr. Edwards, then we really have a problem.
There, there are a lot of things that, within the context of my job, I'm responsible for the individuals who know.
Okay, well, the individuals report back to you, is that correct?
They don't report every second or every day, minute of a day that they actually do their operative job.
Okay, so they're meeting, you don't want to give the location, we don't, you don't know how many times they met.
Excuse me, Madam Chair, I, I did not say I didn't want to give you the location, let's be correct about that. I said I did not know the location, please, let's keep, let's, let's be honest about this.
I'm quite sure you know where they're, where they're meeting.
Yeah, yeah, that's...
I can't see, okay, and I'm going to move past that, because do you have the balance of what is in the ARPA fund?
No, I do not, no, I do not.
You do not, while I've asked Jane for, is a possibility that I can get that, you can share that with my colleagues.
I don't think that it is, there is a real problem with that. Uh, Jane, uh, is currently, Ms. Mayor is, uh, Mayor is currently on vacation. But I don't really think that that's going to be a tremendous difficulty or issue.
I've been asking for over a month.
I, that's, I, not going to debate that you might have, I don't know.
Okay, so did you have the conversation with Ms. Ferguson that in order for me to have any questions, I needed to meet with you personally?
I do recall such a conversation, but you said that I sent the email, she sent the email.
Well, she sent the email on your behalf.
She sent the email, she sent the email to respond to you, not on my behalf. She came to me to ask the question about the steps or stages necessary to handle this, so she could reply to you. That's what she told me.
That's not what the email, she stated in the email that any, that I had to have an, an in-person meeting with you. But here's my, because my, our time is limited. This ARPA fund process is not clear, it's not transparent. It's a violation of the Open Meetings Act because they're meeting secretly, you don't know the location. They're bound by the Open Meetings Acts to keep minutes, they're making decisions with money that came from the federal government, the Department of Treasury. And you don't know as the city administrator, when and how many times they're meeting? And no one's keeping minutes, so the official record keeper can keep track, the city clerk? That's a problem.
Thank you, Ms. Burns, anyone else?
Yes, Madam Chair.
Yes, Ms. Winfrey Carter.
Um, huh, there's something fishy going on with, with the, uh, with the ARPA funds, something fishy. But anyway, uh, Mr. Edwards, while you're there, um, since the, um, ARPA advisory committee is meeting, apparently, um, how far are they along with, um, pinpointing or voting on or sending council the, um, the organizations that they've, um, submitted or that they've recommended to be voted on? So that we can get this ball rolling as far as home improvements and everything else on that list? Do you know how far they are? Because I know they've been meeting.
Madam Chair, uh, to, uh, Councilwoman Winfrey Carter, um, as, up until the time period that, uh, um, Ms. Ferguson left, she did identify the fact that they were ready to make recommendations, they had a few more to be reviewed. Then they would be ready to put forth the recommendations. Of course, that would be, um, translated into resolutions that would end up coming before council. So I would say they're in that last portion of the work that they were doing, um, at this point. She gave me the indicator that they were in that last portion, another meeting, and they would be ready to prepare the recommendations that they were going to put forth.
Okay, I'm, I'm, I'm...
The treasury rules, um, I have to vote against it. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Pfeifer. Anyone else like to speak in the first round? Anyone else in the first round? Okay, we use this opportunity to speak about Resilience 162. So, I'm looking at it, I know, I, I can't support it. Some of it is good, some of it is not. And the part that talks about the reopening up the application for homeowners, the application process for homeowners never was open. This is exclusively for nonprofits. So, we just need some things to be factual, um, in the resolution.
Request for information.
What's your request?
Um, that document can be changed immediately and take out things that you don't like. That will also help with the people in with Palm Station Number Five and other issues that they may have on top of needing those home repairs. So, it can be amended, the things that you don't like.
Yeah, well, well, the first, well, okay, well, thank you, point well taken. So, the first thing that, um, that I don't like is, um, deeming those initial grant requests as official ways to sign up. That's not acceptable because this council did not vote to have those initial ARPA applications as the primary way, or I'll say as the initial way to request funds. If that was the case, that call should have went out to every single person in the city. So, every single person in the city could have had an opportunity to apply. That was not what those forms are made for. So, I don't want to, um, vote for a resolution that repurposes that. Because it's not, it's not fair to those that were waiting on the, um, official process to take place. Um, so, I am, um, um, I am willing to help, um, have a conver- uh, uh, excuse me, I'm willing to have a conversation about some of these things here because at, at the end of the day, this is the, the deal. Um, this is American identity not a race. I wish that, um, we would have been brought on, well, not even we, let's just go ahead and just keep it all the way a hundred. I wish that the body before we got elected would have moved on this, so we wouldn't be here at, at this stage right here. We would have been probably further on the process. So, because our senior councilmen and, and, and other people, they did not move on it, here we are. So, when we were brought on, we were brought on, um, a little late in the game, but Judy and I, we've been working very diligently to catch up and to make sure that this is a fair and equitable process. And so, having a background in evaluation-
Point of information or a request for information.
What is your request?
Councilwoman Lewis, do you realize it takes five votes to move anything for, okay? So, with what you just said, I just want you to understand that.
How about that?
Okay, so, um, having a background in evaluation, I try to, my job is to make sure things are fair and equitable. That this is not a subjective process, that this is an objective process. So, regardless of Mr. Alameen do get up and leave, that the person that takes his spot will be able to pick up where they left off because we have, um, set standards and rubrics that are set forth. So, that's the whole point of doing those things objectively. In terms of where the, um, where the committee is meeting, um, again, my question will be, um, the point of asking that question? Because those are closed meetings, because they're talking about, um, because those are closed meetings. Um, but just going back to the resolution, I don't, I don't want to waste time. Um, I, um, yeah, so, I'm not in agreement with a lot of things here, so therefore, I can't support it. All right, so moving on to the second round.
And the chair.
Uh, Ms. Priestley?
Okay, yes, seeing how part of this resolution actually, um, directs the, the law department to, um, issue a request for proposal, I would like to hear from the city attorney as to how he feels about this resolution.
Yes, uh, I read the resolution to, uh, to direct the city's legal department to issue a request for a proposal, accept bids from potential third-party claims administrators to administer the ARPA funds. Um, issuing a request for proposal isn't a function of the law department, so our, while my staff are capable of a lot of things, this is not something that we really have any expertise or experience in, in doing. Um, it would be as if you had directed the fire, the police department to start responding to fires, to conduct firefighting. Um, so, I, I guess I have some concerns for that, that section in particular, um, given that the legal department really has no experience whatsoever in issuing a request for a proposal for something of this nature or for, uh, even administering the grant funds, uh, much less ARPA funds specifically.
Thank you. Um, also, I do take offense with my colleagues saying that we have not updated them. We've updated them every step of the way with information as we receive it. If we don't have additional information, there's no need to say anything more than what we have said in the past.
Request for information. I don't, you, you haven't called one meeting. Have you not received anything from the administration? The ad hoc committee has not called one meeting.
Going on, we have informed the council during meetings as to where the process is. We are at the final-
What is your question?
When did you do this? Because we have not gotten, I mean, I saw you shaking your head and agreeing with Mr. Edwards. You have not updated us.
I believe we have reported to you frequently about the, um, committee. We have repeated, said that the, the committee was set and that the, um, deliberations on the, on the awards would begin, and that's what they've been doing, and yes, you have been told that now-
No, I request for information. And, and I'm not trying to be disturbed, but when did you, you give us this? Because we have not, and I'm asking for that, and I don't miss meetings. I can't recall. If you could give us the date on when around the time, because this has not happened. I wouldn't be asking for it if we, if we knew it.
I'm sorry, I don't have the dates. I don't keep track, track of when, what I say when. And, um, I just, I don't speak that often in, in, um, in council. I don't ask many questions because I do my research beforehand. Also, so, we, I had to say, I informed you earlier all that at our meeting last week, we were informed that they are nearing the end of completion and that we should be getting the requests for funding resolutions next week. That's the goal. That is going to be on the mayor's because mayor is going to be getting the recommendations, who will then send it on to us. The process has been almost completed and your, this resolution upends everything that Dr. Lewis and I have pressed for, for months, to be a fair and equitable resolution. We asked for the committee to be formed because there, we wanted representation from all wards of this city as part of determining where the funds were going to be going. So, all of the resolutions should be, or at least they should start coming next week. We will also be giving a list, we've also asked for a list of all organizations who have submitted funding and why they were not funded if the, if the recommendation is not to do so. So, as I said, this, this resolution, I think, is, number one, it ends the entire budget that we did. Absolutely, one hundred percent, that budget is out the door, that the council approved. Yeah, and so, I'm just not willing to do anything at this point. I want to see where the, um, recommendations come from. I have not had a part or even want to be a part of any deliberations on grant funds for, for the ARPA. I, and I also mentioned that I spoke to the meeting, the committee at their very first meeting, said, "Thank you very much for coming and for volunteering your time or would be willing to serve in this capacity, and don't call me." I'm not going to call you. I don't expect you to call me. I'm out of it. This is, I'm just saying, thank you on behalf of the, the-
What, what, what is your request?
Have you met, so you spoke and met the twelve people? Because none of us have.
I went to one meeting, I did not introduce, they did not introduce themselves to me. I introduced myself to them. And I said, "Thank you," and I walked out. I had no discussion with any member of that committee. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Ms. Priestley. Anyone else in the second round?
Yes.
Mr. Murphy?
I would like to make an amend, amend motion to move this resolution to finance.
Okay, so there has been, you said, an amended motion?
Yes.
Got to move Resolution Two Three Zero to One, One Six Two to finance. Any support?
Madam Chair, support.
Okay, it's been moved and probably seconded by Councilwoman Burns. Um, any discussion?
Yes.
All right, go ahead, Mr. Murphy.
Yes, thank you. I, um, want to keep this resolution out there. Uh, maybe, um, my colleagues who got, um, changes that they would like to see in this resolution, um, send you an email on what they don't like about this resolution. Um, I know my colleague talked about the fifteen million dollars, um, not having the capacity to deal with it. I don't want to see this resolution, um, dropped based on, we might see a resolution or some, um, recommendations come. We have not seen anything as a, today. So, I'm not willing to just, um, drop this and we need this out here to work on it, make changes, um, I'll look and see if I need to see some changes that I would like to see and I'll email it to you. But, um, I, I don't want to see this drop, so I'll just put this back to finance. And if my colleagues got any changes that they would like to see in there, then they can email you. You can work with Abena, whoever, to try to make this right, just in case. We need to come up with Plan B or C or D, because right now, the Plan A that we feel is being done, I, I just, I, I'm not comfortable. So, that's it. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Mr. Murphy. Anyone else in the second round?
Madam Chair.
Oh, no, no, second round. Oh, I'm sorry, you're right, amended motion. Thank you, thank you so much. Yep, so, um, right, so, Ms. Burns?
Thank you. Um, what I don't want to see is residents have got zero home repairs in the city of Flint, zero. And Ms. Priestley, I have not, you have not shared this information. I don't miss meetings. I don't, and I take notes during meetings. This is the first time I'm hearing you went to a meeting, you knew where they were meeting at, and you went. You didn't stay, you said you spoke, and then you walked out. You didn't correct or say anything to anyone when we were, we've been asking, "Are they meeting?" You're holding information. You're withholding. You're supposed, the ad hoc committee is supposed to act on behalf of, or to, of the council that come back and share. You're acting for the entire council. That's not the job of the ad hoc. Whatever information the ad hoc get, you come back, you share, it's not coming back. The flow of information is just not there. It's not there. I'm concerned with, when we talk about, we don't know what's going on, you walk into a meeting, walk back out. You're just not sharing this. You work with the council. You have to work with the mayor, but you work with your colleagues. We pass, nothing gets passed unless we pass it. It goes to a vote. You're okaying and just saying, "Okay, I'm done with it." That's not cool. Because people have very real issues. SAG and all, as, and people contend, you know, well, their program is stopped, but they started. We haven't even started. They're on to their third phase. We haven't had phase one, and we don't have an application process. So, when we talk about what's going on with these meetings, that's why it's bound by the Open Meetings Act. That's why any meeting is supposed to have the city clerk there, and we are violating the Open Meetings Act. I did get an opinion from, um, Attorney Kim, but I got another opinion because it did not sound right. And I got two, actually, two other ones. That anytime in our charter states a multi-member body, a multi-member body is defined in the charter of any one person or more. There are twelve people on this. Any twelve people that, if it's twelve people, then they're required and bound by the Open Meetings Act. It also speaks to Advisory Committee. This group is ARPA Advisory Committee. Advisory Committee is in the charter. It speaks to it. You can't miss it. How are we not having these open to the public? We don't know what they're doing. And Ms. Priestley, you turned a blind eye and walked out, said you didn't want to know. We don't know what they're doing. When I asked the administration, what's going on with Mr. Alameen, did he quit? You know, is he on there? The administration didn't know. Nobody knows. That is why we have a city clerk. That's why we follow the city charter. That's why we follow the Open Meetings Act, so we do know what's going on. We don't know. That's the job of the ad hoc committee, to make sure they inform all of us. So, don't tell me what you told me, because I'm here. I'm not absent. I'm here. I pay attention. You just told me you went.
Thank you, Ms. Burns. Um, anyone else like to speak on the amended motion? Go ahead, Mr. Pfeifer.
Yeah, while I don't support this as it currently written, um, to Mr. Murphy's point, leaving the door open for possible modifications probably is not a bad thing. Um, but I do want to touch on a point that Ms. Priestley made about, it's, it's an equitable and fair process. How can that be when it's done behind closed doors? Nothing is ever balanced or fair when it's behind closed doors and people don't know. Um, I don't necessarily disagree with having a community, um, committee with their input. I disagree with the point that it's behind closed doors and nobody can see how decisions are made. I've said that for a long time, and I'll continue to say that, that, uh, these are funds designated for the people, and we're making decisions behind closed doors. And that's what I do not disagree with, or that's why I disagree with. Um, so, I don't want to shut the door on this because at some point, if we don't get, um, any resolutions or, um, recommendations from this body, at some point, we have to move forward and get these funds allocated. So, leaving this, um, resolution open for amendments, I will support. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Mr. Pfeifer. Anyone else in the amended motion round? Anyone else? Okay, so I'll go ahead and be the last to speak. So, in terms of leaving the door open, I don't, I mean, although people are unwilling to work with me, I'm definitely willing to go ahead. I'll leave it open, it's not a problem. But I just want to be clear on what's what, because I know that a lot of members of this council, they have a tendency, if they don't like what being said, they tune it out and they're like, "They don't hear." So, um, we said that, again, we bring forth information that is, that is given. I don't make information up. I know I don't speculate. If what I have to say is not true and factual, I'm not going to speak on it. So, what we said in the, in, not in these chambers, but during the council meeting, and I sat right there and sat it from my seat, we had a discussion. We gave a brief update. And the update was, two hundred and eighty-six proposals, okay? Right now, they're looking at home education, homeowner education, and home repair proposals right now. It's a total of eighteen of those right now. And so, Ms. Priestley just updated and said that we're looking for next, um, government meeting. We're looking for the proposals that have been selected to move on to the next round. And mind you, we keep saying this money is for the people, by the people. This, this, these, um, recommendations, this is not solid. These are recommendations from the community. They will submit these, um, at the next meeting. So, yeah, so that is what I gather. At the next government affair meeting, this will be on the, or finance, I don't want to misspeak, but it will be on the next committee meeting. And we will utilize our time to scrutinize the proposals, the recommendations.
Request for information, Madam Chair.
Mm-hmm.
Um, were you attend, did you attend any of these meetings?
That's not my job, so I'm, no, I'm not. I'm not going to a meeting because we put forth a process, yeah, I already said. So, we put forth a process in place and a rubric was all in place. And we, and we will, um, act, um, to, Mr. Edwards, is it possible for you to get the rubric? So, council can see, because they're going to state why one of the four denied were denied. But so we have the rubric, so you ought to see that it's objectively done. And I don't want to keep acting like no one had the opportunity to meet their council, to meet their representative, because their name is publicly, public. It's out there.
Request for information.
What is your request?
Why didn't the ad hoc committee ask them to come before the council? So, we could meet them. We did ask at the special meeting. All three, they didn't show up. Is it possible that the ad hoc committee could have asked that? They could have come to council.
Well, again-
Transparent.
Well, again, if you all wanted to meet them, you could have made the request. It was not a priority for me. But I'm not, but if it's a priority for you, yeah, we probably could have asked them to come before just to introduce themselves. That wouldn't have been a problem. But I don't want to act like this is a secret squirrel group and no one has access, but everyone has Facebook, every person's name.
Request for information.
Go ahead.
I don't know who the person is, and I don't think most of us do, and we didn't know that they, we, they were meeting. We were told that they weren't meeting, Madam Chair.
Okay, so, no, that's not true. We were not told that. I don't know who said they weren't meeting, because as I sat in that chair-
Lottie Ferguson did.
Fuck, you said, Lottie Ferguson said that they were not meeting.
Before, and then she, she's been gone about a month now. She was saying that they weren't meeting. So, we didn't know.
Well, so, hold on, so let me be clear. I don't want to put things up. In terms of, I can't tell you what Lottie told you, and she's not here to defend herself. But I sat in that chair as a colleague, and I told everyone under the sound of my voice that two hundred and eighty-six proposals, and I said, "Right now, they're in the process of going through the eighteen." I said that. So, whether people chose to tune it out or listen, I said that. Furthermore, if you don't know who your person is, I don't know why, but we kept telling you specifically to go to, go to the ARPA, and we told everyone, and when you made a question or comment, we said, "Go to the ARPA." What is your request?
Madam, do you know where they're meeting at?
We said, "Go to the ARPA, City, um, City of Flint website, and you will see your representative." They're there. They're there.
Request for information. But Madam Chair, that's not meeting them. That's a person's face.
No, 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 uh, hold on, so I'll answer your request, because this is not a back and forth. But you said that you didn't know, did not know who they were. So, you have the opportunity to find out who they were if you log on to the website. So, that just means that you chose not to log on to the website. I'm not going to abuse my time. The, uh, the time is over. The time is over. Uh, request denied.
Madam Chair.
Request is denied.
Madam Chair, point of order.
Which point?
Thank you. This is serious. This is ninety-four million dollars, and you're blowing it all. We cannot just go to a website. That's, we don't meet the people. I need you to be fair and share some space.
I'm sharing, the time is up.
But Madam Chair, you are the chair.
The time is up.
But we, excuse me, as you went down the rabbit hole, do you know where the people are meeting?
Time is up. So, so now, we have to vote on the amended motion to send Resolution Two Three Zero One Six Two to Finance Committee. Roll call, Madam Clerk.
Ms. Priestley, no. Ms. Murphy Carter?
Yes.
Ms. Burns?
Yes.
Mr. Pfeifer?
Yes.
Ms. Worthing?
No.
Ms. Lewis?
No.
Mr. Murphy?
Yes.
Vote is four yes, three no?
Vote is four yes, three no. So, we're going to go on back to the original resolution, and we are in the second round. And so far, Ms. Priestley and Mr. Murphy have spoken. Anyone else would like to speak in the second round? Ms. Burns?
This process has not been transparent, and I would like to ask you, do you know where they have met? Ms. Priestley went there, so she knows where she went. And with both of you being on the ad hoc committee, I would assume you know too. Where was, where was this meeting at?
Hello?
Did you, to Ms. Priestley, Ms., did you, Madam Chair, to Ms. Priestley, where was the meeting at?
I attended. The meeting I attended was not their regular meeting. I don't know where they've been meeting to evaluate the process. This was their informational meeting that I attended, and that was at the Ruthmont Foundation, who supplied the meeting space. Where they've been meeting to evaluate the process, the applications, I have no clue. Nor have I known when they were meeting, except for this meeting on tomorrow, and I don't know where they meet.
So, they have a meeting tomorrow, and we as a council don't know, and furthermore, the public doesn't know. Just like our council meetings, and it's, let's go back to the charter. You can't argue with the charter. The charter is very specific. The charter says, defines in the first five or six pages, what is a multi-member body. Multi-member body is any group or person, if it's more than one. More than one. This is a group of twelve. Then it states specifically in the charter, if it's an advisory, ad, advisory committee, ad hoc. This is the ARPA Advisory Committee. When it's an ARPA advisory, or it's an advisory committee, ad hoc, it's a multi-member, because you have multiple people on here. This is not a single, uh, group or single person in this group, then you're bound by the Open Meetings Act. Furthermore, they are doing the business of the city, just like the citywide advisory committee, just like what Ms. Priestley submitted here. She actually submitted someone to the citywide advisory. And guess what? It comes by resolution to the Flint City Council, and we vote on it. That's the way that this ARPA committee should have came. So, just like her person came for this, then this should have came, the ARPA Advisory Committee, all twelve, should have came by ordinance of our resolution, because that's how the charter. That's the charter. That's not my specific way. That's how it's supposed to be done. And it's not being done this way. And when it's bound by the charter, just like the citywide advisory committee, they have minutes. They, they have someone chairing. They have offices or people who's want to preside over the meetings. And then when it's all said and done, the pub, the public can attend. Then it's turned over to the clerks, so that we have an official record to know. We have ninety-four million dollars coming here, and there will be no official record on how this meeting and decisions were made. This is in the charter and the Open Meetings Act. You can Google the Open Meetings Act. I think page nine begins to speak on it on the Open Meeting, in the Open Meetings Act. So, we're just saying, you know what? Do what you want to do with this money. You're, we're giving our power away. We're giving our elected seats away. We're giving our elected seats away. The people who put each of us in these seats are the residents. I'm not going to rubber stamp nothing. Why I did not pass the budget, one of the reasons I was not going to rubber stamp it, because one, this is a secret meeting, a secret committee, they're meeting in secrecy. Nobody knows nothing about ninety-four million. I, I'm not going to sign on to that. I'm not going to say, it's not a little money. This is a, a lot of money. This money came because of a, uh, a global pandemic. I hope we never get this money again, because people lost lives. And we're sitting up not taking it seriously. This is the thing that we should all be working together to make sure that this process is done fair and equitable. It is not a fair and equitable process when it is not following the Flint City Charter. What is a multi-member body? I'm not going to any website to meet my person. That's not my job. That's not what we're supposed to do. It is supposed to be the responsibility of the ad hoc committee actually to say, "You bring your person by resolution, like this person did, to the Flint City Council." We can all meet these people. We can read about them. We can, you know, talk them, if, if they're here. We can ask them questions. That's the way it's supposed to be done. This is becoming a rogue and lawless council, and I'm not going to be a part of that. I did vote for that budget because we don't know what's in ARPA. We weren't told what was in ARPA, and people said, "Oh, well, we wouldn't have had any city services." Well, you know what? We still don't know what's in ARPA. You took away our leverage. I bet if we didn't pass that budget, we would know where this committee is meeting. We know how much it was- I bet if we didn't pass that budget, we would know where this committee is meeting, we'd know how much was in ARPA. We'd know what ARPA was spent on. I remember the day when everybody found out that seventy-five thousand dollars was used on speed humps. I'm, I'm happy they were spent, you know, spent on speed humps. Because my ward benefited the most from it. But the point is, it wasn't, we didn't follow the process. The process was not followed correctly, we're not making up new process, that's not what we should be doing.
Thank you, Ms. Burns. Anyone else would like to speak in the second round? Anyone else in the second round? So hearing that they're going in the second round, I will conclude as the last person. Ms. Burns, according to the City of Flint, what is everyone, it's all of our duty to utilize all the resources that we have to get the information that we need. Your sixth ward representative, according to the City of Flint ARPA website, is the Mr. Dakota Star, Mr. Dakota Star. And again, I didn't see the priority award in bringing them to the meeting. But if you would have expressed that, see, we have council members that say, I don't want to work with you and stuff. So therefore, we can't get things done, no one expressed that to me. You know, I'm getting texts that say F you, so, but if you would have expressed to me, hey.
Oh, for information, have I ever said I wouldn't work with you?
I didn't say you specifically, but again, um, when I received text from you saying F you, Liddell.
Oh, I did say that.
That, that under.
I, I did, and I, and I said that because you sent me a nasty text.
Excuse me, you don't have the floor, you don't have the floor, you don't have the floor, thank you. But the point is, if council were just willing, be willing to work together. Let's not use our places and our platforms to spread misinformation, but use this time to work together. If you all would express that you would like for the, um, for the committee to come and introduce themselves, we could have put forth that request. That's not, I don't see anything wrong with them coming here and introducing themselves. But I don't want to go forward with false narrative saying that you don't know who your person is when you can go there and.
For information, if I have not met him, Madam Chair, you're stating he's Dakota Star. You're stating I have not met him, so you're in agreement with me, obviously.
No.
You're telling me who Dakota Star is that I have met, that would have been your responsibility as the chair of the ad, with the ad hoc committee. To share that, you didn't do that with us.
That's out of, out of order, wait a minute, because that's not a request or a point of, so, the point is, you stated on the record, it's not about talking fast, it's about talking factual. You stated on the record, I don't know who my person is, I just told you.
Request for information.
And then what is your request?
You just told me, which means you just now told me. You have been on the ad hoc committee for nineteen months.
Okay, that, that's enough proper request, that's enough proper request, and you keep thinking you will receive your first warning. So let's, so let's stay at. So let's make sure that we maintain decorum. The point is, you said, Ms. Burns said, that you did not know who your person was. I just informed you who your person was. In addition to, I told every single council member where they can find their representative. Then you made the comment that it is not your duty to go on a website and look. I have no comment to that. And if this body will like for them to come before us, we can put in their request, we can't do what's not asked. It wasn't, that wasn't a priority for me to have them come before you to be met. So therefore, I, Judy and myself, we didn't request that, but if you all would like to have them come before council and to, I guess, to say their names, I, I really don't know, but we can put in that request. But we want to make sure that we are staying, staying factual. So if the rest of the colleagues, this is something that we can talk about, if you would like to have your person come here and state their name, we can request to have that happen. But going back to the point, the ARPA, and according to the legal opinion, the ARPA committee is not a multi-member body. So therefore, it is not beholden to the same rules and standards of the typical body. This is according to our legal opinion given back in January. It is now July. If we had an issue with this, we would have been taking that up then. But we explained how this committee was selected, why it was selected, how it was selected. And I honestly, hey, I am confident that we have one of the most objective processes in selecting this ARPA committee um, in the state, and I probably can be fair enough to say in the country. Because we put forth, we put forth sound effort to make sure that all information was redacted and this was not the homeboy or homegirl hookup. We didn't want the council members selecting their people, I don't want to select my person. Because it's not about me, it's about the community. The community stepped up to be a part of this process because this is the community's money, this is what the community did. We set up a, a community process. We were open, we, we let everyone know how it went objectively, no one, and here we are. So again, I will not be supporting this because I don't want to support bad information. And the bad information is given people who were told to sign this sheet. Um, we're telling them that they have, um, I guess, first priority over though they did not submit that misappropriated um form for ARPA applications. And um, and that's just that, so with that being said, we will go ahead and call for the vote for resolution two-three-zero-one-six-two. Roll call Madam Clerk.
Ms. White Carter?
Yes.
Ms. Burns?
Yes.
Mr. Pfeiffer?
No.
Ms. Worthing?
No.
Ms. Lewis?
No.
Mr. Murphy?
Yes.
Ms. Priestley?
No.
Vote is three yes, four no?
Vote is three yes for no, um, resolution two-three-zero-one-six-two fail. The chair now maintain um a, a motion. Can we go to, hold on. All right, so we will, we will go on to the motion two-three-zero-one-nine-zero. And it was separated by Ms. Worthing, did that, Ms. Worthing speaking, go ahead.
I moved two-three-zero-one-nine-zero to council.
Of course.
I've been moved promptly supported by Ms. um, Priestley. Um, any discussion?
Madam Chair.
Go ahead, Ms. Worthing.
Um, is there someone from, okay, thank you. I'm going to wait for Mr. McGah. Hi. You may have explained this during committee, um, but I did not stay at that time. Um, this is not to repair the sidewalks, this is to.
Just to get us an assessment of the sidewalks.
What does that mean exactly, an assessment?
It's going to tell us where all the good ones are, the bad ones are, and it's going to be a rating.
Okay, and then do we have a plan for once that's done?
Hopefully, we can, once we get an assessment in place, we can ask for a, for a grant maybe. I would like to try to get all the sidewalks wrapped up with tree root damage, that'd be my highest priority.
Perfect, thank you, that's my only question, I just wanted to see what this was about. Um, just as others stated, the sidewalks in every ward are horrendous. And a lot of it is because of the trees uprooting, um, that, and feel like it's not a homeowner's fault when that happens. And then, but then we're, we were only told you got to pay uh, for the sidewalk. And so it's been a problem for years, I'm glad to see that we're gonna look into this and start repairing it because in no ward is Flint a great place to take a walk. I have a dog for a while, I just would go to my parents' house and walk them in their neighborhood because I couldn't, I was afraid I was going to trip and kill myself, really, um, just walking around the block. Although consumers came and did some work lately and they fixed my sidewalk, so there's one freak right there because they had to do work. So it's actually a lot easier to walk on it. Uh, but there are many areas that still need to be fixed. And it's not handicap accessible, it's not an easy place for people who walk to the bus stop. Because I'm on the bus stop route, people walk up and down all the time. It's a safety issue and just really just an accessibility issue. So um, I'm going to be voting yes on this, I just wanted to make sure what that meant, thank you.
All right, thank you, Ms. Worthing, anyone else would like to come in?
Yes.
Mr.?
I support this assessment, um, you know, I have some reserves about, we already gave one um, in partnership with the Community Foundation, the Great Government and the Planning Department with different organizations, they did um, party uh, the sidewalks. Um, I also support the idea of replacing all sidewalks, even um, in front of vacant land. In my ward, we have a lot of vacant land versus um residential homes. And I would hate to see those areas be um left out because um, they don't have homes. What I would like to see is my ward be a ward to where residents can um, if they're in a wheelchair or if they're walking, um, be able to walk up and down the sidewalk or the kids be arriving by. Um, that's probably ain't never happened since I've been born, our sidewalks been messed up.
But let's try to start somewhere here, so.
What I think this could possibly do is find some um commonality amongst the council to um support replacing sidewalks. I believe you said at the last meeting that we were, either you or Clyde Edwards talked about um, two million dollars of ARPA funding going towards um sidewalk. Um, I would like to see the um compliance firm go and lobby additional infrastructure dollars. And maybe um, they can find some matching funds to support this and maybe we can go to Ruthmont, my foundation or Planall Foundation or the state of Michigan or um Congressman Kildee to just look and see what the infrastructure bills, is, is there um opportunities for us to find some matching dollars to help build whatever that cost is once we do the assessment of the sidewalk, whatever that looks like. I would um support a strong effort for us to go and lobby. And I'm sure the man administration will probably do whatever they can to get additional dollars to um, address these issues with sidewalks. Because I think, how much you say a sidewalk costs?
I, I misspoke last week, I said four hundred, but I think it's a little bit over three hundred a square.
Uh, okay, so a person that's on a fixed income got to pay three hundred dollars per sidewalk and trying to pay their bills, I, I just don't think that's attainable far as with their budget.
Unless it's a tree, tree, tree rooted problem and the city takes care of that issue.
I, I just, wha- what's the number for um those people to call if they have, are you guys, do you guys have funding now? Or are you guys doing sidewalks now?
Yeah, we're doing uh trip related, but you know, around the red.
What, do you, do you have a number that they can call?
Uh, they can call street maintenance, yeah, seven-six-six.
Seven-six-six.
Uh, seven-six-four-three, I think it is.
Seven-four?
Seven-six-four-three, I believe. I, I have to look up the number.
Oh, we don't want to give the wrong number off.
Yeah, I don't like doing that.
All right, when, when you get that number, can you email that to me?
Yep.
All right, thank you, all right, I'm done.
Thank you, Mr. Murphy, anyone else would like to speak in the first round?
Madam Chair.
Mr. Pfeiffer?
Well, I have my reservations for this, um, through you, Madam Chair, Mr. McGah. Um, can you tell us what the GIS integration means?
I'm hoping that's all going to be on a map, on a map system.
That will be accessible to the public?
To the public, I'm not sure, but to administration it should be. I guess it'd be up to the administration to determine whether or not we want to make that public.
Um, I, like I said, I have reservations. And I don't know if I'm going to be able to support this because I do not see, um, to Councilman Murphy's point, I don't see where our firm gave it their blessing that it's approved, that's, this is approved. Do you have that?
I'm sorry.
So every ARPA spending, we get a, a statement in the resolution that states that that uh, says that this is approved for funding.
Madam Chair, if I may, through you to Mr. Pfeiffer.
Point of information.
Give you some information. Um, neither the attorney nor um the CFO, the acting CFO, will um assign these without um, without the approval of Ernst and Young, not only that, but the plan was.
No, I understand that, but the CFO and whatever else come and go. And it's us responsible, it's our responsibility to make sure that these funds are, are allocated. And I, for, for me to take Mr. um, who's her, uh, old CFO.
Wait again.
Wait again, for me to take his, to take his word or anybody else's word and then tomorrow they submit the reservation, it comes back on us. And I don't see where Ernst and Young gave their approval that these can be expended under ARPA. And then, correct me if I'm wrong, normally, we have that.
Mr. Pfeiffer, they have never signed, that, there's usually a wording in there that says that it's been determined by the, by Ernst and Young to be an allowable ARPA.
Yeah, it's not here.
It's not in that?
It's not in here.
I, I missed that, I.
It's not in here.
Looked for that.
We did have a meeting with them and they did approve it.
And you get any kind of written approval before council in a couple minute, a couple minutes? Do we have that somewhere?
I, I don't think I have.
Because I, I mean, I'll, I'll send it to council, but I won't go for it, council will tell. Uh, the compliance firm that we spent a lot of money on, tell us that it's okay to spend this money on these services. So, um, with that, I'll give back my time, thank you.
Anyone else? Anyone else in the first round? Anyone else in the first round? Okay, see, if there is no one else, I will speak. So um, Mr. McGah, I guess I have a, a little bit of reservation. So when you say sidewalk assessment, what exactly are they doing? Are they walking the streets?
Yes.
Okay, so, um, okay, so I guess this is what gives me pause. Because, you know, I walk the streets as well. And I'm wondering, I mean, for a hundred eleven thousand dollars, I'm like, wow, just imagine how many more sidewalks we can do if we just take the calls from residents that already putting in requests about uprooting trees and things of that nature. So I, I guess I'm, I'm, it looks like we're paying someone to do something that the residents have already done when they just look outside their door, see that city trees or whatever, that the sidewalk is messed up. So we're paying someone just to rewalk the streets and retell us what we already, what the residents already have been telling us.
Yeah, I, I kind of hope I have any assessment in hand and we can apply for more grants, we'll have all that information they would need. I don't think we can apply for grants just because the homeowner called and complained about tree roots.
Okay, so, so you said apply for a grant, can you tell me a little bit more about that process?
Well, it's just my hope that after we get the assessment, that maybe we can start applying for grants and then we have backup information showing how bad our sidewalks are.
Okay, well, you know, i- if this will help us, if this hundred eleven thousand dollar, well, I'm not, how much does the sidewalk assessment cost along? Because I see it says along with GIS integration, is that the same company?
I'm the same company?
Yeah, yeah, is that the same company that's doing GIS integration?
Yes.
Okay, and so is this a package deal that they're doing or is this two separate things?
No, package deal.
Okay, the only thing that will, I mean, that's pushing me to vote yes for this is the fact that a hundred eleven thousand dollars could turn into more dollars. Because otherwise, yeah, I, I can give you a, a list for more too, myself, and uh, you can throw that in my chat. I'm just joking, but you understand.
I can drive the streets every day and come up with a list too, but it's not a professional list, it's not a, through a company that's done it before. I'm hoping with the special assessment, we can get more help. And we can't get by just saying that our sidewalks are a bad shit.
And you're going to hit every single sidewalk in the City of Flint.
They're supposed to, yes.
So my last question is, um, what will be the, the check and balance to make sure that they hit every single sidewalk in the City of Flint? Is that where, where someone, uh, like maybe council, we, we have access to what they've done via the GIS integration? So would that show us where they?
I'm assuming so, yes. Assuming so, yes.
Okay. Alright, well, thank you so much, Mr. Magah. We're gonna go into the second round, so stay put just in case.
Okay.
Anyone else in the second round?
Madam Chair.
Ms. Worthing.
I think maybe to ease some concerns, I I would look at this as like the lead line removal. Like it's not something you can just say, hey, our lines are bad, fix it. We have to have like professionals come in and we did hire professionals to come in, assess the lead lines, um so that they then could be fixed. Um, I don't think we have the manpower, uh Mr. Magah, to walk the streets. No. And I know a lot of us have been waiting on this for a long time, um as Mr. Murphy said, all of his life. So if this gets us one step closer to getting new sidewalks for the city, I'm all for it. Thank you.
Thank you, before anyone else?
Madam Chair.
Ms. Burn.
Yes, Mr. Magah. You said it'll take about, what's it, four months, you said, to do it?
I I'd have to recheck, but I'm assuming, I think that's what they said, something around.
And so they'll give back to you, um, her address. And you said that it'll be all of the, um, the entire city, whether it's a vacant block or not. Um, the support will be complete for everything that has a parcel number.
I've asked for every sidewalk to be assessed.
Okay, and I.
Whether or not people live on the block or not, I think those should be assessed.
Right, I know some uh parts of wards, we don't have anyone on the block at all. Um, but I don't want it done like the lead lines because it's still, hm, they haven't finished those. So I appreciate you getting a professional company because we still don't know that service lines, where they're replaced and we're now going to court facing five hundred dollars a day, fine. So I look forward to this because I know my ward, I turned in an Excel sheet. There are still some people who still, um, who have still been missed. Um, and this will cover everything so that it will be thorough. And so you just, did you uh say with Mr. Pfeifer that you would be able to get with the compliance firm, um, to get the uh um, he wants written, we all want, should want written, um, that they did say that it is, um.
Yeah, I've got it on here. I'll give, try to get something right.
Okay. Well, I support getting the sidewalks because I have seniors and they walk in my neighborhood. And sidewalks are terrible. They're really bad. And a lot of them have still been there. Um, they're, they had the, their first time homeowners. They stayed in that house for fifty, sixty years. And I would like to see their sidewalks be repaired, uh because now they're walking walkers. Some of them, they're getting their day exercise. Um, so I I am going to support this. I I, you said you will get Mr. Pfeifer, you'll share that with everyone else. That's compliance firm did give the okay, that uh, that the guidelines to be done.
Yes.
Thank you.
Very well.
Alright, anyone else in the second round? Okay, well, I'll be everybody asking this. So this money coming out of our home?
Yes.
Alright, so we have allocated two million dollars for sidewalk repair. So would this be two million dollars minus the one hundred eleven thousand?
No. I don't think so.
Yes.
Oh, yes. Thanks for hearing that.
Okay, very good. So this is already coming out of um set aside money for sidewalks. Very good. Okay, well, thank you, Mr. Magah.
You're very welcome.
Alright. Alright, so um we are looking to send Resolution two three zero one nine zero to council. Roll call Madam Clerk.
Ms. Burns?
Yes.
Mr. Pfeifer? Worthing?
Yes.
It sounds lame.
Yes.
Mr. Murphy?
Yes.
Ms. Briesley?
Yes.
Ms. Whitaker Carter?
Yes.
Vote is seven yes, zero no?
The vote is seven yes, zero no, Resolution two three zero one nine zero will be sent to council. The chair will now entertain a resolution to send two three zero one nine one to council.
So moved.
Are any support?
Support.
Are supported by Councilman Murphy. Any discussion?
Madam Chair.
Ms. Worthing.
Um, anyone that can address the tree service? That's not Magah, is it? He does. Does he?
Yes.
Do you do the tree?
Yes.
Oh, okay. Awesome, good. Thank you. Um. What is the change order for exactly?
Uh, this change order is for mustard tree. We just, the the vendor we had prior to, we had a lot of golf. So we hired mustard tree at the end and that's just to get up through the last.
Why did we let the other ones go? Were they not?
Uh, they were not doing their job in the correct time of manner.
Okay.
So, yeah, we let them go.
And then they cost more mustard tree?
Uh. They must a little bit.
It's ninety five thousand? More?
I think we ask for more for emergencies.
To, for tree removal?
Yeah.
Itself, okay, like to to remove more trees?
Yeah, cause the storm damage, we keep running out of money.
Okay. And is this to remove trees that are uh deceased or diseased?
This is the remove of the trim of any type of work order form.
That are city trees?
City trees, yes.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Alrighty. Anyone else in the first round?
Yes, Madam Chair.
Uh, Ms. Whitaker Carter?
Yes. Um, Mr. Magah, you know what, I'm gonna support this because we have a lot of trees, city trees that they're old. Um, I have a tree over on Seminole. Whereas, it's a very old tree, but this, and I'm gonna send this in to you. The tree is kinda, the branches of the tree is over overarching over, over the homeowner's house. So that needs, that tree really probably need to be looked at to be uh kinda cut down. Um, so I'm gonna.
And I'll send out the arbiters to take a look at it.
Okay, I'm I'm gonna support this because um the city is gonna be liable. We've had some really um damage to to homeowners' properties of these city trees. I just, and then I just, I just realized maybe a couple of months ago, someone were out, and I don't know if you know this, and maybe you do. Someone, they were out planting trees on the city side of the sidewalk.
Yeah, we do have a little program where Genesee County's plants the trees.
Why?
Because they're, they're great for the environment.
Yeah, but.
Request for information.
Go ahead.
Um, but are those trees not going to damage sidewalks? Like, I get her point. What was planted was horrible. Are they doing better now?
Well, I would hope so. I don't know what came first, the tree or the sidewalk, but somebody screwed it on the wire.
Look, I just don't understand why because if, I mean, in every ward, we have trees planted on the city side that's damaging sidewalks. They're damaging um, um, property, infrastructure. I mean, why are we planting new trees? They're gonna grow. They're gonna grow. I don't want any trees planted on the city side of my sidewalk. In fact, I don't even want any trees planted in my yard. I wanna chop down the tree that's, the one little small tree that's planted in my yard. Why? Why are we planting trees? But anyway, I'm gonna support this because we we got a lot of work to do as far as these trees. I gotta, I gotta, there was a tree over there on um Percy Park Avenue that fell and damaged um a homeowner's porch, okay? And the city is gonna be liable for this. So, yeah, we 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 really need to support this. We need, really need to um approve this. Pass it to council. Thank you.
Alright, so anyone else in the first round? Anyone else in the first round? Alright, anyone else in the second round?
Madam Chair.
Ms. Worthing.
Um, I think we should contact Keep Genesee County Beautiful just to reassure ourselves.
Point.
Yeah, sure.
Information.
Mm-hmm.
Genesee County Conservation District, not Keep Genesee County.
Okay. Sorry, thank you.
Yeah, I can check that address if you wanna send it to them, make sure that they were the correct people that were planting trees.
Maybe they could like present or send us information on what they're doing because I did share some information about the planting of the trees, cause trees are important. Um, but I'm sure they've done the research, well, I sure hope they did. Um, because I've, my my grandfather, cause I bought the house that were my grandparents' home, um, he cut down the trees because the trees that were planted really didn't fit the city. They got in the sewer roots, you had to constantly fix it. Um, very tall, just not the right tree for the uh environment. But then, my house is hot. Like, I have no shade. My air conditioning bill is insane, so I planted and researched myself and planted a tree in the backyard that wouldn't grow too big, that wouldn't give me too many problems, but could help with the environment and my bill. Um, so I'm assuming they did the same.
Yeah, we have a list of trees that we recommend people to plant if they're.
Okay.
Yes.
Good, because I mean, you just learn as you go and I'm sure we've learned more things since we had the trees and planted some crazy tall trees in the wrong city environment. Yeah, um, so it, the important thing is moving forward that we learned from that, so it doesn't happen again. But still, trees and shrubs and all of that is super important and I'm trying to do that, but in a way that fits my city backyard. Um, I think that was all I wanted to talk about. I'll be supporting this. Thank you.
Are anyone else in the second round?
Madam Chair.
Ms. Briesley.
You know, I know, I also bought my grandparents' house. And every tree that was in the property when I lived there is gone. Um, the this lorraine was beautiful in the fall with all the ashtrays. And of course, I lost my my two ashtrays to the Emerald, Emerald Ashbauer. Um, when they, I was, I was prepared to cut my tree down, but I came home and it was gone. Where'd my tree go? But um today I cut that tree down because of the disease and I was falling limbs. I did replace my tree. And I found a tree where the root ball is contained and it's designed, it was bred or cultivated to stay within a certain distance and not supposed to go into the streets. Designed to be planted in the middle of the streets. So there are trees out there like that. And it's getting to the point now where it's hiding my bedroom window from, from street, from lights and stuff. So I, I know that those are possible and I do hope that those are what they're using, those type of trees. So I am, I'm definitely in favor of this.
Alright, thank you, Ms. Briesley. Anyone else? Okay, seeing no one else, I'll be allowed to speak. So Mr. Magah, let me tell you my issue with the cutting of the trees. They just chop the trees up. So, um, so my question is, what are we doing to ensure that the tree does not look a mess? I say after it's assessed and when they go to service it. Because there's a tree, there's plenty of them, but one that really caught my attention was on the corner of, it's by, it isn't by by the old dozier of church, Pasadena and um at Saginaw Street U-turn. It's a piece of bark and one limb. And that's it. The tree looks a mess. So what are we gonna do to ensure that, you know, when they take care of the tree, that they take care of it properly? So I know that, you know, that utility lines go between them. But you know, what are they doing to make sure that the tree does not look like an eyesore to the community that it's been chopped up?
Well, whenever you see a tree like that, more than likely, it's consumers' energy. They come by and they have their tree companies be out of tree. And the only thing they're concerned about is their wires. They're not concerned about anything else. Now, we have our professional companies come out, we have the arbiters go out checking before and have the arbiters go out checking after to make sure everything is done correctly.
Okay, well, speaking about how consumers does the chop up job, is there anything that the city can do about that?
Uh, that would be more of a law question there. I I don't think so, but.
Okay.
But yeah, whenever you see the V like that, it's it's usually consumers.
Okay, understood. Alright, well, thank you and I will act legal.
Thank you.
Alright, thank you. Alright, so um being that I am the last to speak, we're looking at sending Resolution two three zero one nine one to council. Roll call Madam Clerk.
Mr. Pfeifer? Ms. Worthing?
Yes.
Ms. Lewis?
Yes.
Mr. Murphy?
Yes.
Ms. Briesley?
Yes.
Ms. Whitaker Carter?
Yes.
Ms. Burns?
Yes.
Vote is seven yes, zero no?
Alright, the vote is seven yes, zero no, but the Resolution two three zero one nine one is now officially sent to council. Alright, so now we are on Resolution, oh, like add-on Resolution number one. Add-on Resolution number one. So is there a motion?
Madam Chair.
Ms. Briesley?
Big motion to send Res- add, Resolution add-on number one to council.
Okay, is there support?
Madam Chair, I support that motion.
Alright, supported by Ms. Whitaker Carter. Um, any discussion?
Madam Chair.
Mm-hmm.
You know, I I I like the overall concept of this resolution. However, I do have concern. It says in the amount of three hundred to four hundred thousand with set funding coming from ARPA and or the fund balance. I really would like to see some kind of um clarity. Um, that's one of the problems I have with some of the resolutions that come to us is that they aren't specific. And um, so I don't even know if the ARPA dollars can be used for this. I don't believe that they can be based on my knowledge of of the process. So that would have to come from the fund balance. So this is really a budget amendment. If we're adding money to the police officers. And so this is not um appropriate resolution. I like the concept and I would like to have further um information and work with the um, fight the acting chief financial officer as well as the administration to get a proper resolution for this because I do support the concept. I just don't just support this resolution because of its um not, because it's not clear. Thank you.
Alright, thank you. Thank you, Ms. Briesley. Uh, anyone else in the first round?
Madam Chair.
Ms. Burns?
Is Chief Green here? Is, is he here?
No.
Um. Mr. Edwards, did you come in please? If Mr. Edwards is coming, I know he can hear me. Um, this was one of the questions that um during the budget um hearing, our budget hearings, our budget adoption, that I believe that did come up, that he needs more funds. Um, you know, for officers to be paid for overtime. Um, crime is, is high. We don't let it to increase. Does Chief Green need more extra funding for uh overtime to pay police officers?
Uh, as it was talked to, uh, well, through the chair to uh Councilman Burns. Uh, of course, Mr. May's brought this issue up to me. And uh I do believe the chief is always open to additional funding to support um the police force. So uh I I think that, you know, there's opportunity to use these funds for uh overtime or for the engagement for which this particular resident resolution uh was speaking to. I don't have it in front of me, but I know speaking to uh extracurricular kinds of activities that are happening in the city and making sure that there's some form of uh police protection around.
Well, and I'm gonna read it so that the people can hear, so that it is resolved that appropriate city officials are authorized through all things necessary to fund overtime for current city of Flint police officers for additional weekend patrols at various neighborhood hotspots in the amount of three hundred to four hundred thousand. And so that um. And so that um is what it's for. And I don't think if we had a shooting last Wednesday at four o'clock in the afternoon. Um where four people were uh quickly um injured by bullets uh in the shootout on Mallory Street. So our crime and hunt, now they don't wait till this weekend, although I know it is an uptick and it's busy on Friday night and Saturday nights. But I don't also want to um support having six police officers who were here at a special meeting. Intimidating residents to be arrested, that wasn't a good use of overtime. Neither wasn't a good use of having three police officers at the repaying of the Black Lives Matter. To make sure they didn't retouch it up on uh ML King Street in front of the side he bought. I mean, if we're talking specifically, you know, does he need it, I wish he was here. Um because this was one of the questions that we talked about in the last effort, the budget adoption, the chief wasn't here. I believe everyone, I am going to support for for crime, but I'm not gonna support for the nonsense, which I did send the email. With my concerns about having six officers at a meeting that was legally posted. That to me was a waste of overtime and city resources, which shouldn't have been used. Because the meeting was legally posted. It was legally posted, it wasn't a legal meeting. And then to use officers as a threat when officers carry guns, pepper spray. And and um they're stun guns, that that just isn't appropriate. I don't like the way that you're using the police against the residents for nonviolent crimes. There's plenty of violent crimes that's happening here, plenty of them, plenty, plenty of them. And if we're not using funds correctly, I don't even know if I, you know, I I get the nature of this. But I'm looking at nonviolent things for families, the Black Lives Matter was a retouching up, that was a family event. Where they have police there making sure they didn't retouch it up. In San Francisco, in Seattle, in New York is in front of Trump Tower, in Detroit. Um in every major city, they have a Black Lives Matter painted in the street. And the only place we don't have it now is right here in the city of, we have it, but it's starting to uh fade. I mean, so to come up with that and to have the police to be there, that's just not a good a good, I don't wanna pay overtime for that. And we shouldn't have police officers for overtime, which do you know where they're paying for overtime, the six officers for the special meeting that was held? We only have usually one and we have a total of six that day. Were they paid overtime because they drove up in their personal cars?
Yeah, Madam Chair, to through uh you, uh Councilman Burns, first of all, that those those officers were here. Because we had uh credible information uh concerning the fact that this was meant to be a stable, peaceful meeting. And we had credible information to say that it would not be. And so we were cautionary in terms of having officers available at that particular situation. Uh resident safety is always first and and council safety as well as 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 uh part of that process. So that determination was made why they were here.
Okay, and. And 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 that's just, I I get that, that is like the the general, that's just not true. I mean, let's let's just state it, because the deputy chief of staff came and yelled and screamed out to have everyone to be removed. It was an illegal meeting, then Officer Metcalf told me that, you know, we didn't leave, I was gonna be arrested. I would never have a case, but I guess I was gonna catch my first case of being arrested with the residents on that day. Because that meeting was legally posted and that was not a good way to use resources when we talk about overtime.
Alright, so thank you, Ms. Burns. Uh anyone else would like to speak in the first round?
Yes.
Mister Murphy?
So our um this is this resolution um for the extra money for the. The upper dosage, um so here here we just passed the new fiscal budget. They're already in the budget, they they already budgeted some funding. They. They came drawdown off of existing budget that they already have and. And come to us for additional dollars versus putting the carpet for the order. We just passed a budget that they have money budgeted for. We also probably have unspent dollars that's coming back. For positions that's not filled in the police department, that maybe that money can be used towards um. Additional dollars or something, maybe you could reallocate those dollars into the overtime budget if that's allowable. My other question um that concerns me. And I think about over there at a roller wood neighborhood where. Somebody knocked the um street sign down, they flying around the curve on Western. Going into the um one of those street even back. Let's see if we got orders of signs that say. Uh with the flashing lights that say slow down. On Selby Street, they flying up and down Selby that say slow down or something. You know, um upgrade our technology when it comes down to signage in some of these um hospital areas. Uh and I think about um just this weekend, somebody got killed on um. Burgo and Saginaw, right there in front of the drifter's uh lady. Um drove down allegedly flying down Saginaw Street and hit a motorist. That was uh participating in the um festivities that the drifters have at Bowie Park. And the after parties of the drifters afterwards and so they was be outside chilling and somebody drove fast down Saginaw Street. And hit, and I'm not sure, I know police officers in overtime can't be everywhere all the time. So even if we earmark some money to bring um let allow police officers overtime. There are also some other things that I think need to take place. And then even when I put a request in for signage, um if it ain't budgeted for that. Um and then three hundred thousand to four hundred thousand. Um when you go three hundred thousand to four hundred thousand, what does that look like? Is it three hundred thousand or is it four hundred thousand? You know, when you talk in general, that's a big jump, it's either or, it's three hundred thousand to do what? Or four hundred thousand to do what? Like, that's a bit in between. Uh I I support the spirit of that, but we just went into a new budget. Yeah, we got money budgeted for the police department already, so what's your take on that, like?
Madam Chair, uh through you to uh Mister Murphy. Mister Murphy, this this particular resolution, first of all, let's just be clear, this particular resolution was not the brain trust. Uh brainchild of the administration. This was something that through some form of collaboration and I was not part of that discussion. So I cannot give you exact details in terms of what may have been discussed between uh Chief Green. And Councilman Mays, Councilman Mays just brought me up here this since this meeting started to show me that resolution. And he indicated to me uh what he felt like were some of the needs uh that the police, you know, have at this time. So I I would not report to um understand or know exactly any gaps. Um in the police department at this time, cause as you said, we just started another budgetary cycle. Uh so this this particular resolution though was out of a discussion between those two gentlemen and brought to this body.
If Chief is through, it is um Chief Green here to speak on this resolution?
Uh no, he's not here.
I mean, well, that would have made sense, so we can get a feel of what he's thinking before we go broken something up or down. And we don't know what what his mind at and we just through the budget. And they already got money budgeted for overtime if they need to do drawdown off of that. So I I I'm I just got some reserves, I'm done.
Alright, alright, thank you, Mister Murphy. Anyone else in the first round?
Yes, Madam Chair.
Ms. Murphy Carter?
Um you know, I would hate to see this uh resolution. Um this motion fail. Um and and I just wanna say, I support whatever it is. To boost up the uh public safety, the police department um in the city of Flint. Whatever we can do, because I mean, just like you spoke of the shooting over there on Mallory Street last week. Uh there is so much going on and it's happening during the summer months. May, June, July, August, even in September and into October, some of the fall months. Um we need more um police on the streets. We do, we need more patrol cars, patrolling, um hotspots, areas. And so I support it, but what I wanna do, I want to um make a. Um amended motion, I want to amend the motion. And I would like to send this um resolution to committee. To um finance. Cause I do not want this to fail on this floor tonight. So I would like to send this um to finance committee and um we can have further discussion.
So there had been an amended um motion to send resolution um number one, add-on resolution number one. So finance committee, is there any support? Okay, wait a minute, now who said it, was that you? Okay, so I wanna go with Murphy. You said Mister Murphy, right, or me?
Yeah, I think Madam Chair, I think we both said it at the same time.
Alright, well, I'll go with Murphy. Alright, so supported by Ms. Burns? Okay, any discussion?
Yes, Madam Chair. And I I I um I sent this back to finance committee. Because I definitely do not want to see this uh resolution fail. Um and in the spirit of of the resolution and whatever Councilman Mays. And um Chief Green talked about, I would like to give them an opportunity to speak on this. Um Chief Green is not here tonight, Councilman Mays is not here. And I think it's fair that they are allowed to speak on this resolution and bring more light to it. So with that, I'll be um voting yes to send this back to um finance committee. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Alright, anyone else would like to speak on this amended motion? Ms. Byrne?
Thank you. Um Mister Edwards, I always say public safety. I may push Chief Green because I see what's happening in the streets. And it is the worst thing to talk to a mother or father or grandmother. When their child is in the hospital with a gunshot wound or gunshot wounds fighting for their lives. We do need Chief Green to be here because he needs to give us some type of, you know, public safety plan, how he's gonna do with his gun buy. He needs to be pulling over these cars, getting these guns from them, cause they ride with them. That last, it was a shootout two days ago, was it yesterday, on Lawn Dale? It was a shootout when they did it on Mallory, they literally were going head on with the other car shooting at them. So when we talk about the guns, the guns are in the cars. You know, they they carry them like they carry their wallet or their purse or whatever, it's a part of them. And we need to be pulling over these cars and and because you get, I I and at this point, I'm not. I know people's rights and they wanna be concerned about these their rights, but these people don't care, they don't care. This person, that car shot four people, four people were critical in that scene. It the shootouts happen all the time, all the time. And so if. I support that, he also shouldn't use them overtime on his backlog cases, unsolved homicides. He needs that too, but Chief Green needs to be here, is there any reason why he's not here, is he on vacation?
No, he's not, and this this um particular resolution, I just, you know, I I've mentioned that several times. It was just presented to me now, so there was no need to call Chief Green not knowing that this is a resolution at the time that I arrived here, so.
Yeah, and I know it used to be in this administration runs different as opposed to all the sixty-five years before. That department, all department heads would be at the meetings in case a question arrived.
That's not.
What's not true?
That all department.
Department heads.
On on department, up until this administration, and I I used to watch the council meetings as well. Up until this administration, they weren't at every, they weren't at every.
Majority time, how many do you have here now?
How many do we have?
The department heads.
We have whatever was in regards to the resolutions that he had submitted.
Okay, so now it's it's up to the resolution, I can tell you, I'm watching. You would see prior before Suzanne Wilcox, you would see Rob Benzick, you would see the uh. Uh Police Chief was not there, uh most of all.